This is a regular council meeting of the city of Southfield for March seventeenth. Governor Clark, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert.
Here.
Ms. Seymour.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Lance is excused this evening. Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Ms. Jordan is excused this evening. Mr. Pritchett.
Here.
You've got five members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next lady we have is a joint resolution of council and mayor, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, and she is present. May I ask you if you'd like to come up there? Lieutenant, would you like to come forward? I was thinking of her earlier. That's what she's been doing.
Good evening, everyone. We are really proud to acknowledge the hard work and commitment of Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson as being our superintendent of Southfield Public Schools. And she began that service in July of two thousand and six. Doesn't seem like it's been that long. And this proclamation is a joint resolution signed by the council, the mayor, and it says whereas the result of her stellar performance, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson was selected as the twenty thirteen state superintendent of the year by the Michigan Association of School Administrators. And whereas, why Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson has been instrumental in advancing Southfield Public Schools as a role model for districts throughout the nation through her visionary leadership and energetic advocacy and commitment to the students, faculty, and district. Whereas, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson has spearheaded numerous district achievements, including district-wide accreditation by ADD, increasing student achievement with a district-wide focus on instruction, increasing graduation rate, and scholarships earned district-wide, in earning the Bridge Magazine State Champions status for the district's high graduation rate, and maintaining, a very important thing, maintaining a balanced budget by reducing operating expenses by ninety million dollars in six years, and developing a partnership with the National Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development to implement district-wide professional development. The district now serves as a model for that accreditation. And therefore be a result that we, the mayor and the council of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize and congratulate Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson on her many accomplishments, and be further resolved that we, the mayor and the council, convey our collective best wishes for much continued success in your new role in Oakland County and in all your future endeavors. And I do want to say in her disclosing to me that she was leaving, she wanted me to know that being in the executive team of Oakland Schools, she could still look after Southfield Public Schools. And so that was very important to me. It's bittersweet that I'm so proud of you and excited for your future and that you're still making sure that we will continue to be one of the best school districts. Thank you so much.
I want to thank the city council and the mayor for this recognition today, but know that it truly takes a village. And as I look around at each one of you, I know the part that you've played in helping this school district become the success it is. You have been mentors. You have been uncommitted. You have come whenever I call. And the mayor has brought dollars to me in the terms of grants, STEM Day, and all of those good things. I encourage each and every one of you, please stay involved with the school district because we only started to rise as this partnership between the city and the Board of Education became stronger. So I leave Southfield in your hands. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may.
That's a hundred percent.
I just want to say that over the course of my career in education, I've worked for many, many people. And I have to say, I've worked with Wanda Cook Robinson from two thousand and four to two thousand and eleven, and she was absolutely the finest boss I ever had. You're wonderful, and we'll miss you here.
I remember when Wanda Cook Robinson came to Southfield and the superintendent Beverly Geltler at the time brought her in from Oakland County. And I was ecstatic when I heard about her accomplishments and that she had what really fascinated me, she had a son that played the violin. And at that time, we were working with the orchestra. So she's just been a fabulous person, a fabulous school superintendent, and a great friend. So going back to Oakland County, we're going to miss you. We're going to miss you a lot. But I just want to wish you every wonderful thing in your life because you've been super. Thank you.
Everybody said things that I'd like to say, but I've done a lot of volunteer work with the schools, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. And the difference between the way it was and the way it is now is remarkable. And I think you're the ingredient that makes the difference between the way it was and the way it is now. And thank you so much.
I'll chime in here, and I know that Dr. Cook Robinson has certainly enjoyed being the superintendent of Southfield Schools, but has found in this role, you wanted to broaden your advocacy for public education. And I think that this role that you're taking with Oakland Schools is the perfect fit for you to continue to be an advocate for school, for increasing funding for public education. And as we bid you farewell, I'm excited for you. I'm excited for the role that you're about to take, and we can still hear from you and see from you as you take this new position.
Thank you.
And just going to continue to live in the community.
Yes.
I also want to recognize our husband who is here. Mr. Ressler, please stand up.
Other members, the next item we have on the agenda is the minutes. Mr. President. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to bring forward Mr. Gary. I'm sorry. At this time, I'd like to bring forth Brandon Gray. Would you please move forward? Council, we had a lot of discussion about millenniums and bringing younger people into the role of leadership in our city. This young man approached me and said that he would love to have an opportunity to serve on the Parks and Rec. There's a very unique connection. He watched his dad, a very dear friend of ours and one that we will truly miss, Devon Gray, is his dad. I was impressed by his commitment and wanting to serve the community. He works with Focus Hope, so he's very active in programming of youth and opportunities for the community. He is a member of the National Association of Social Workers and other mentoring programs. And I think his perspective on our current Parks and Rec Board will bring a good addition and balance to the objectives that we're trying to reach at the Parks and Rec Board. So council, I'm asking for your approval for this, for the board, for fill the vacancy on the Parks and Rec Board.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the appointment of Brandon Gray to the Southfield Parks and Rec Creation Board support.
This move by Mr. Seibert, supported by John Ross. All in favor, say the same time.
Aye.
May this motion carry, so welcome aboard.
Mr. President, may I add a few comments? And we knew your father incredibly well here in the city of Southfield and is a new boss to our community. But I'm excited to see you step up. I'm excited to have you serve on the Parks and Rec Board. We introduced a city council resolution last month that we wanted to encourage a younger generation to serve in these boards and commission seats. And you, this appointment from the mayor, is helping us to fulfill that. I'm encouraged by your willingness to serve, and I think this is going to be a great fit for you and the city of Southfield.
And your father would be proud of you.
Oh, he is.
Yes.
That is where I'm at, Madam Clerk.
Yes, and while our birthday's approaching, I just wanted to recognize the great family who's here. We have Mrs. Gray who's here, who, we know you're a big one now, but (laugh), Brandon's mom is here, Mrs. Gray. His girlfriend is here, please stand. So we recognize you, his sister, and his aunt.
Mr. Fraser, right hand, please. You hereby swear affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of this state, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of Parks and Recreation Board in support of the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, according to the House of Euro.
While Mr. Gray is walking around to meet the council, I just want to say to the listening audience that we are actively looking for people to serve on boards and commissions, whether you are young, whether you are experienced. We want people who want to make the city of Southfield better. And it's better when all of us participate. And one of the things that I was looking for on our Parks and Rec Board is to create that diversity of age, diversity of parents, single, those who play golf, those who use our facilities, so that when that board makes a recommendation to the council or votes are issued, it is representative of the whole community. And I did want to thank Mr. Gray. If you're interested, go to our website, our city website, click on Boards and Commissions. There will be an application form there, and you can, there are many boards and commissions. Please choose the one that you so choose or you have a passion about. Fill it out, fill it, and send it in. And the stronger we are as a community is a reflection of how many of our residents are involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the approval of the minutes for the special meeting of January fifteenth, special meeting of January twenty first, regular meeting of January twenty seventh, and the committee of the whole meeting of February tenth, two thousand and fourteen. Ms. Jordan.
That's right. Mr. Seibert, supported by Mr. Fraser. All in favor, say the same time.
Aye.
May this motion carry. Any, Ms. Jordan, you wanted to abstain?
I want to abstain on January twenty seventh because I'm abstained, but I'm willing to favor my opponent.
Director, I would indicate that Councilwoman Joan Seymour is abstaining from item C in the minutes. Going through the consent agenda, we have quite a few items under this portion. We have the Parks and Recreation Grants, the first four items that we have. I'm going to try to go through them and try to paraphrase them, although they're all very important. But these are basically the steps taken to develop the grants. For these, it is not getting any approval for any acceptance, but for the Parks and Recreation to apply. So one is, A, is the authorization to apply for land and water conservation program grant with Pebble Creek Park Play Area renovation. This request is to authorize staff to submit an application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for a hundred thousand dollar reimbursable development grant through the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the Pebble Creek Play Area renovation project. Should this grant be approved, authorized and equally matched for a hundred thousand dollars, and that is to be provided through a budget appropriation from Parks and Recreation Fund dollars, as approved by the council, and it should be authorized by Parks and Recreation staff to sign all grant application documents on behalf of the city. B would be the authorization to apply for grant funding for the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for the Horse Tail Woods Acquisition Project. Horse Tail is at Nine Mile Road and between nine and ten on Burr Road. This authorization is for staff to take appropriate steps to submit an application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for a ninety-nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollar reimbursable grant, which represents seventy percent funding for the total project cost of a hundred forty-two thousand five hundred to the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund for the Horse Tail Woods Acquisition Project. To recognize that the required thirty percent local match of the forty-two thousand seven hundred fifty shall be provided through a donation of land value by the property owner, and authorize Parks and Recreation staff to sign all documents related to the grant. Upon the grant being funded, this item will come back to council for funding assignment with appropriate account number, and authorize mayor and city clerk to sign this contract document. C would be the authorization to apply for Michigan Recreation Passport Program Grant for Beach Woods Recreation Center Group picnic area. Staff is to take appropriate steps to submit an application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for a forty-five thousand dollar, seventy-five percent reimbursable development grant to the Michigan Recreation Passport Program for the Beach Woods Recreation Center Group picnic area project. And should the grant be approved, authorize twenty-five percent local match of the fifteen thousand, and that be provided through a budget appropriation for Parks and Recreation Fund Balance, as approved by the council, and authorize Parks and Recreation staff is to sign all grant application documents on behalf of the city. The authorization D is to apply for grant funding from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for Englewood Park Improvement Project. This is to authorize staff to submit an application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for a two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, which is seventy percent reimbursable grant through the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund for the Englewood Park Improvement Project. And so authorize a local match of a hundred-and-twenty thousand, which is thirty percent, and that be provided through a budget appropriation from Parks and Recreation Fund Balance, as approved by the council, and authorize Parks and Recreation staff to sign all documents related to that grant. Item E is approval of agreement for installation of irrigation system and turf on Telegraph Road Media between I-696 and the north city limits. As you remember, that Telegraph Road was under construction, and during that process, they cut the line that serviced the water system to the islands. It took us five years to get here, but we're finally having it before the council on this date. And this is to approve the replacement of the irrigation system. Estimated total cost for the turf establishment project being a hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred dollars, with M-DOT estimated cost share being ninety-six thousand three hundred, and the city of Southfield's estimated cost share being ninety-six thousand three hundred. And that is to be provided from the insurance risk retention fund, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement documents on behalf of the city. F would be the authorization to purchase required replacement vehicles for the police and code enforcement departments. This is to authorize the purchase of several automobiles, as mentioned here in item F. It is important that the expenditures will total three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand six hundred seventeen dollars and thirty-two cents, with funds provided in the two-thirteen fourteen motor pool equipment replacement account. This authorize the purchasing department to dispose of the vehicles being replaced in a manner most advantageous to the city, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any motor vehicle titles in connection with their will. G would be the authorization to purchase required replacement vehicles for the Public Works Department. Again, there's a listing on our March seventeenth agenda under item G, a listing of all the vehicles which are going to be purchased, with the total amount being one-hundred-and-one-thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars, with funds provided in the two-thirteen fourteen motor pool equipment replacement account. And the water equipment account, and authorize the purchasing department to dispose of the vehicles being replaced in a manner most advantageous to the city, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any motor vehicle titles in connection with their will. H is the approval of agreement for the reconstruction of Evergreen Road from eight mile road to nine. This will be approval of the project with an estimated total cost of five million ninety-five thousand one hundred, with the federal aid estimated cost share being three million two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand eight hundred, and the city of Southfield's estimated cost share being one million eight-hundred-and-one-three-hundred, which amount shall be provided through the two-thousand-and-thirteen fourteen water and sewer budget account and the local improvement revolving fund. This is also to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement documents on behalf of the city. I is the authorization to purchase additional coal patch materials for the Public Works Department, like they really need it, and approve the purchase of up to an additional six hundred tons of coal patch, high-performance materials from Ace Saginaw Feeding Company of Saginaw, Michigan, and Lincoln National Corporation of Battle Creek, Michigan, at the unit price of eighty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. And at eighty-seven dollars per ton respectively, total expenditures not to exceed fifty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars to February twenty eighth, two thousand and fifteen. Funds are provided in the two-thousand-and-thirteen fourteen streets and highway budget and in the two-thousand-and-fourteen fifteen streets and highway budget, as council may approve. J would be the Lawrence Technological University's new student housing, Oakland County Economic Development Corporation issuing some bonds, resolution approving Lawrence Technological University's project plan. This will approve the university's project plan in accordance with the Economic Development Corporation Act, Act number three-three-eight of the Public Acts of nineteen seventy-four as amended, and instruct the city clerk to communicate this approval with the project plan, the board of directors of the EDC, and deliver to said board of directors a certified copy of the resolution. K would be receipt of bid for replacement channel bulletin board, the AC Channel program for City Cable Fifteen. As you know, presently, that is, the billboard is presently out of order and shows up on the screen that it is not working. So this item will approve the purchase of a replacement character generator and a programmer for the cable TV department for rededicating fund balance to the VTB Inc., which headquarters in Burbank, California, and local office in Novi, Michigan, for a total of forty-five thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars, and authorize forty-five thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars to be transferred from the Cable Fifteen reserve fund to the two-thousand-and-thirteen, two-thousand-and-fourteen cable TV equipment purchase account for this purpose.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the consent agenda, items A through H, or K, represent.
To board. Move by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Seibert. Mr. Seibert, you have a comment?
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment on two items. I'm supporting them, but...
Who, by Mr. Seibert, or corrected? Who, by Mr. Seibert, supported by Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on two items, just to underscore, we talk a lot about roads and the condition of our roads. Item D, when Telegraph Road was redone a couple of years ago, the contractor that works for the state of Michigan, Telegraph State Road, destroyed our landscaping and our irrigation system on Telegraph Road. To get that section of road looking the way we want it to look as a result of standards, here we are having to pay ninety-six thousand three hundred dollars. And there's really nothing we can do about it. The state of Michigan refused to, hasn't repaired the road, hasn't, was a median rather, and has left us holding the, they're paying a portion of it. And the other item is H. We do have a number of road construction projects going on in the spring, and just to underscore for the listening public, that mile between eight and nine mile road to be redone is over five million dollars. And true, it includes sidewalks and sewers, but it's tremendously expensive. And obviously, we do have a grant to pay for three-point-two million of it, but almost, well, one-point-eight million is coming from the city of Oakland. And I think that this speaks to the problem that is really the crisis we're in with our roads. We have been good about or aggressive about getting outside dollars for road repairs, yet the local match is significant. And whatever money we get from the state and Act Fifty-One road funds or from our local road mileage, that's what this money goes for. And yet, we're doing one mile of one road with a one-point-eight million dollar contribution. That's what we're up against. So we have heard from the public for all winter long about the condition of roads, and this is a challenge that we face because of the price tag to do this work. So I just wanted to highlight that. I'm certainly going to support about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert. The next item that we have is the public hearings.
We need to move.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please, I missed this amount of money that is involved?
I think...
That would be the motion would be by Mr. Seibert, Mr. Fraser, to approve the consent agenda.
For the consent items?
Yes.
A through K.
Do you want to call both?
Yes, all together, cut out this one.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
And Mr. Pritchett, I'm sorry. Mr. Pritchett?
Yes.
Okay, you have five dollars of favor. Thank you.
And then we'll move on to public hearings. CR thirteen-twenty, the reselling request of Michael Zier. Zier coming to be sold two-point-eight-nine acres of OS Office Services property to be three. Madam Clerk, has it been properly advertised?
Yes, the site has been properly advertised.
Now, Terry? Now Terry?
Thank you for the chair. Again, our first public hearing in ZR 1320, a rezoning request of Michael Zier from Zier Company to rezonate 2.89 acres of OS Office Service Property to B3 General Business Property located at 21800 West Ten Mile Road on the northeast corner of West Ten Mile and Lhasa Roads. I have a brief video for the audience.
ZR 1320, the rezoning request of Michael Zier of Zier Co. to rezonate 2.89 acres of OS Office Service Zone Property to B3 General Business. The property is located at 21800 West Ten Mile Road at the northeast corner of Ten Mile Road and Lhasa Road, Sidwell Personal 2422-351-075 in Section 22 of the city. The subject property is currently zoned OS Office Service. Properties to the north are zoned OS Office Service. The properties to the west across Lhasa Road are zoned OS Office Service, B1 Neighborhood Business, and B3 General Business. The properties to the south across Ten Mile Road are zoned B3 General Business and OS Office Service. The properties to the east are zoned R2 Single Family Residential and OS Office Service. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is developed with two separate office buildings. The property to the north is developed with an office building. The properties to the west across Lhasa Road are developed with a transmission tower and parking lot from Michigan Bell Telephone Company and an auto service garage. The properties to the south across Ten Mile Road are developed with a gas station and an office building. The properties to the east are developed with a single-family home and an office building. The total site contains 2.89 acres of land with 358.82 feet of frontage on Ten Mile Road, 459.67 feet of frontage on Lhasa Road, and a depth ranging from 176.61 feet to 247.46 feet. Issues considered by the planning department during review of the rezoning were, the proposed rebuilding is not in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan that indicates office research for the property. The proposed rezoning to B3 General Business will allow for the development of the property with a new land use compatible with the existing developments. The proposed rezoning will not have adverse effects upon any of the adjoining zoning or land uses.
Are you a petitioner? Are you the petitioner, sir?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to give your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Michael Zier. Address 30230 Orchard Lake Road, Suite 250, Farmington Hills, Michigan, 48334.
Thank you.
If I may, good evening to the city council. Just a little bit about my background. I've been a preferred developer for a couple of different national tenants for the past 17 years, and this actually is my first development opportunity in Southfield, which I'm very familiar with for a very long time, lived here my whole life in Michigan, and would like to ask the city council for rezoning of the property we just heard about. I feel that the northeast corner of Tamara and Lhasa is a great opportunity for a redevelopment commercial use, being that Southfield has many vacancies in offices. I don't feel that office would be a good fit to keep there at this time. Also, these buildings have been vacant for, let's say probably close to seven years now, and I feel that, again, the corridor is well versed to be for a commercial use similar to what kind of what's going on in Evergreen. And granted that the property at the present time is residential, uh, excuse me, is office, with commercial on that corner, it'll just enhance the entire property there. And, you know, a little bit about my background again. We did many developments in different cities. We've done a few different awards from different various cities on the work we've done for professional company, and really do a first-class job, and would love to have the opportunity to do the same here in Southfield.
Through the chair, can I just make a couple of comments before we open the public hearing? Just for the council's information, both of these buildings were built in 1978. The larger building measures 31,552 square feet. The smaller building measures 11,000 square feet. And as Mr. Zier has indicated, they've been vacant 100% for at least seven years. As you know, our office, especially on the lower, the lower class level of office, we have a glut of that. When this master plan was adopted in 2009, we were just starting to enter into recession, and it's worth revisiting this corner, and we hope to do that as part of our larger comprehensive master plan as well. Thank you.
Okay. We'll open, you may have a seat, and open up for a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak? The records indicate they're just a minute. Okay.
Mr. President, my name is Terrar Mon. My address is Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. This council's legal notice for this public hearing, ZR 1320, was never, never, not ever, never ever, posted by this city council on this city's legal notice bulletin board. But you folks had no problem posting your picture of yourselves outside these chambers, in the hallway, near the legal notice bulletin board. Why did you folks post your picture but not this legal notice, ZR 1320? Paradoxically, it seems that everybody but this council posts their legal notices on Southfield's legal notice bulletin board. For example, both the state of Michigan and the federal government post their legal notices right outside these chambers. Even the US District Court for the Western District of Michigan posts their legal notices in Southfield on Southfield's legal notice bulletin board. And Southfield isn't even in the Western District. It's in the Eastern District. If an out-of-district court can post their legal notices just outside these chambers, why can't you folks? Where's the transparency? What are you folks covering up? What do you think? Your bad spelling? Your poor grammar? Your inability to write a proper legal notice? Or are you simply trying to slip this one past the goalie tonight? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037, D.A. 0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I agree with what Mr. Zier said, that these buildings have been vacant for quite some time. I want to inquire as to whether or not asbestos or some of those issues, have they been addressed with this building being vacant for so long? And I do like the thought of rezoning from OS to B3, but I'd like to know more specifically what types of things would be put in this particular area. I guess it's going to be retail, but I would like the city to have a little bit more specificity as to what's going to be in this particular area. And because it's been vacant for so long, and we need to look at whether or not there's any asbestos issue, would this qualify for brownfield or some sort of tax abatement? And will this come up later on as a tax abatement or possibly a brownfield? But I think just the fact that it's going to be taken over, I'm in total support of the buildings being demolished and something else being put there, but I just want more specificity to the types of businesses that will be in this B3. The asbestos issue, if it's any concerns, and also, will it qualify for a brownfield or some sort of tax abatement? Thank you.
Next, please.
My name is Geraldine Amatou. I'd like to make just some general overview of this request. While we are doing business as usual, this nation is controlled by those who do not have any of our interests at heart. And the economy of this nation is on the verge of collapse. We gave plenty of previews about it, yet we continue to do business according to the parameters set by those in control of the economy by various acts of treason and fraud. We have been deceived for very long, and those in the business community need to realize that while some are still prospering, that there's a danger ahead. And unless enough people with business know-how realize and look further ahead, take some, well, you have to reflect on history if you can find out through history these days. Much of it is concealed. But to make a projection on where we are headed as a nation based on the information that is given us at this time, for example, crumbling infrastructure, many people being displaced from the economy, many people who depended on, for example, retirement incomes to survive in their declining years, finding that all that is under threat, et cetera, et cetera, burgeoning prisons, schools are not teaching children qualities that engage people into lives of integrity and honor, and the separation of us from each other. So while we are so busy doing business and not noticing what these master planners are setting up for us, we are contributing to our own decline. This nation is in the throes of decadence, and most of us are either too busy or too well-educated by the masters to perceive things according to their agenda and not realizing where we're headed. We are building our castles on sand, no matter how well the business prospects look. The business prospects are not good because those who control the global economy want this nation as one cog in their machine. And so long as we keep being separate into the national, the global economy, we will find that individual enterprises in this nation will be in severe decline over time. Initially, you might see a little prosperity, but long term, it's going to be a collapse, and we'll wind up ourselves in a third world, so-called economy, where you have only the filthy rich globalists, and the rest of us as either mercenary slaves, where most of us are today, or just downright outcasts with nothing that we can call as our resources to work with. Many of us still have some resources to engage ourselves in a meaningful way, and yet we continue to do business according to the parameters of a group of people that evidence themselves as outlaws in this nation. And their intent is global control of everything that we have and that we think that we own. We don't own. We just possess at this time, and we will be dispossessed if we continue to do business according to the masters directives. We need to break loose from the mindset of continuing business as usual and begin making some assertive, important resistance to what's going on in this nation. We here are playing at government because we do not govern our own lives. We have no control on the business establishment. It is controlled by alien, foreign, globalists, and we continue to say we're prospering as a city. It is not true.
Did you turn this off?
Any questions?
Anyone else, please? The records indicate there's no one else who wishes to speak on this item?
Council?
Council?
Council President?
Yes.
Jennifer Cassidy? I would just like to state for the record, please, this item was properly advertised in the newspapers on March 2 of 2014, and notices were sent to all the surrounding property owners on February 28, 2014. So this, again, was advertised in the newspapers.
I will close the public hearing. Mr. Fraser, anyone wishes to comment on this item?
I would, I would like to-
Mr. Seibert?
Yeah. Just, first of all, my plan is to support this. I remember when the house that was on that corner with the English Tudor was torn down, the Matterhorn. I never understood why the complex was called Matterhorn, but I would suggest that what's there now, besides being obsolete, is not very attractive. And if you're going to remove these buildings, that you put up something that has some visibility on the corner, something that is more than a box. And you might even want to go back in history of Southfield. This was the first, the first area that was settled. It was called Crawford's Corners. Maybe instead of a Matterhorn, you go back in history. I'm not telling you you have to do this, but just a suggestion that I think the corner between having two gas stations and then this not particularly welcoming office complex, that I didn't realize it had been vacant that long, but I do appreciate the fact that you have a new vision for the corner, and you want to see something happen there. We do have restrictions, and maybe this question goes through the chair to Mr. Pro, but we don't want, we're concerned about proliferation of check cashing places. You've probably been, heard that already, so we are concerned about what kind of retail, and especially want you to have some sensitivity that there is a high school, two high schools across the street. So something in the neighborhood that would be appropriate, given that you have a school kid corner from you, as well as our concern about the kind of retail that we don't think is in the best interest of our city.
I agree, and I appreciate the comments. It's funny, the reason why I chuckled for a minute because that's the first thing that I had told Terry and Jeff that, you know, it's not going to be check cashing or Chinese food restaurant. Nothing to, you know, nothing really fast-paced or, I want to do something similar to what's like in Evergreen, you know, a nice corridor with some nice facade and some nice structure. And, you know, just something that I forgot to state earlier that, you know, I've had several meetings with Terry and Jeff just to get their idea, because I think it's important to communicate with the city prior to and get their ideas. And also, I communicated with the building behind me and all the people, pictures that are in, the office suites behind me. They were all in support, along with the Planning Commission, who had the annual support, and I do appreciate that and working together. And comment was made regarding asbestos, and of course, I'll follow all the city and government agency rules and regulations to that.
Oh, thank you. Terry?
Yes, I just, the response to one of the comments Mr. Seibert made was, the Planning Commission did recommend that a unified development take place on that corner as opposed to individual pieces, but that's still to be determined. The council will have any site plan or special use brought back to you at that appropriate time, yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, I also think that's a good idea. I also didn't realize that the buildings had been empty that long. But what we don't need are-
But what we don't need are more buildings with no one in them. So I appreciate the fact that you're willing to put some money into cleaning up that corner, make it more attractive, bring some more business into the city of Southfield. Changing the zoning might help do all of those things. And if Mr. Cyberg hadn't brought it up, I intended to bring it up, and that is, keep in mind that there's, the high schools are right across the street, and I know that you probably have to walk a, probably a balance line, because you want to have something that's attractive to Lawrence Tech students, which is right down the street. So we don't need high school students sneaking out of class or spending a lot of time across the street. They need to spend as much time in school as they possibly can to be entrepreneurs and come rent some space in your new building. I plan also to, you know, go sit down and meet with actually Lawrence Tech, get some ideas on what they think would be a good fit, since they're down the street, just get some ideas. Terry? Thank you.
Mr. Seymour?
Thank you. I think I know the corner that you're talking about, you said the northeast corner, but isn't there a building there on Ten Mile that was a school?
No, that's Burg...
That's the Burg...
At Burginton.
All right. I answered the question. Thank you.
Geraldine?
Yeah, I drove the property earlier today, just to kind of get a sense of what we were voting on, and it is really a tired complex, out of date, out of touch of what type of development we need here in Southfield. I didn't realize it was completely a shell of a building with nothing in it, so I think, I applaud you for coming to council and kind of making better use of the land that we have here and putting it back up to where it should be on the market and what we should expect from a major intersection. Ten Mile and Lots of Road should have a development like this. So I'm looking forward to the site plan as it comes back to council in the next few weeks, and hopefully we'll work hand-in-hand with our planning department on what we kind of expect here in Southfield in terms of what type of developments we're welcoming. So we don't need to keep empty shelves at our major corridors here in Southfield, so I'm happy you're stepping up to develop this.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Mr. Seer, I have a comment to make. On the north and on the east corner of your property, it's still OS. And I was wondering if there's any opportunity to purchase those two pieces. And the reason I mention that is because as you develop the commercial piece, because of the side yard restrictions, you know, you're going to run into a problem in trying to put the building that you're ready to build in a way that it'll conform, you know, in a regular rectangle, as opposed to having a piece out of it. Because when you look at that northeast, and then you take so many feet away from that north property line and then the east property line, you know, it doesn't, it may shadow the building. I don't know what the depth of that is, but, you know, you need at least 100 feet of depth for an office building or business. And, you know, by the time you get, you probably have to come in with variances in that city is kind of tight on variances lately. Okay, but I would think you'd give it a project if you have a full property, but that's up to you. I do appreciate the change, we have a lot of office space, some of it's older, and we have to start changing some of the zones in the city to get rid of some of the office buildings, to be honest with you. And this is a good use. And to the city administrator, you know, Mr. Seer's going to do a nice project on that corner, we better clean up the other side. That place is a mess, okay? And, you know, it's really neat to see it doing something beyond that, the robotics team, whatever it was that was stopped the high school, the contest, and people running all over the place looking for food and things and bringing them into the gymnasium. And so I think it's really a great location for the needs. They have football games there and all kinds of events before and after. It just really lends itself to complementing the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for a motion?
I move the DR 1320 to rezonate the 2.89 acres from office service to B3.
For? Headed by Mr. Cyberg, supported by Mr. Fraser. All the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
And ayes, and motion carries, Madam Clerk. The next item we have is DR 1321, the zoning request. What? Oh, I'm sorry. Give it to me. I'm really this game.
1623.
What is it?
Mr. President.
1623.
Mr. President.
Mr. Fraser.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1623.
Your support?
Support.
Moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Cyberg. All the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
And ayes, motion carries. The next item then is DR 1321, the rezoning request of Mark Drain, Broadway Architects, on behalf of the owner, Southfield HS Development, to establish an overlay development district with existing underlying RC Regional Center, a property located at 26555 Evergreen Road, on the west side of Evergreen Road between Civic Center Drive and I-696. Is this property advertised, Madam Clerk?
Yes, this property has been properly advertised. Thank you.
Through the chair. Terry, you want to give it over?
Yes, thank you. Council may be aware that this is our third overlay development district, and it is part and parcel with site plan number A, which is a little bit later on in the agenda. The site plan itself is not subject to the public hearing, but because it's part of the overlay district, it would be appropriate if I could show both videos at the same time concurrently. I'm sure there will be overlapping discussion on each of the items, but the public hearing...
Sure, you want to put the B and the site plan, which would be A, together?
Yes, if I could. They'll require two separate motions, but, and the public hearing will be specifically on the rezoning, but since they're part and parcel, it might be appropriate to have a discussion together.
Sure.
Thank you. I've got two short videos to show. DR 1321, it's a rezoning request of Mark Drain, Broadway Architects, on behalf of the owner, Southfield HS Development, to rezonate 11.48 acres of RC Regional Center property to ODD Overlay Development District with underlying RC Regional Center. Property located at 26555 Evergreen Road, on the west side of Evergreen Road between Civic Center Drive and the I-696 Service Drive, civil parcel 2422-277-006, in section 22 of the city. Subject property is zoned RC Regional Center. Properties to the north are zoned OS Office Service and RT attached single family. Properties to the west across Central Park Boulevard are zoned RC Regional Center. Properties to the south are zoned RC Regional Center. Properties to the east across Evergreen Road are zoned R2 Single Family Residential. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is developed with an office building. Properties to the north are developed with an office building in the Evergreen Meadows Conventiums. Properties to the west across Central Park Boulevard are developed with an office building in parking deck. Property to the south is developed with an office building in TGI Friday's Restaurant. Properties to the east across Evergreen Road are developed with the Southfield Public Library and Civic Center Complex and the Southfield Reformed Presbyterian Church. Total site contains 11.4 acres of land with 655.25 feet of frontage on Evergreen Road and a depth of 822.48 feet. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the rezoning were, the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan indicates city center sub area for this property. Proposed rezoning to ODD Overlay Development District with underlying RC Regional Center will allow for the development of the property with new land uses compatible with the existing itself. The proposed rezoning will not have adverse effects upon the joint zonings or land uses.
Senator Terry?
I have one more.
Is the petitioner present? Would you like to make one more? Do you have another one, Terry?
Yes.
Okay.
SP 1309, the site plan review request of Mark Drain, Broadway Architects, on behalf of the owner, Southfield HS Development, constructed 19,000 square foot mixed-use development on property located at 26555 Evergreen Road, on the west side of Evergreen Road between Civic Center Drive and the I-696 Service Drive, civil parcel number 2422-277-006, section 22 of the city of Southfield. Subject property is zoned RC Regional Center, pending rezoning to Overlay Development District with underlying RC Regional Center. Properties to the north are zoned OS Office Service and RT single family attached. Properties to the west across Central Park Boulevard and south are zoned RC Regional Center. Properties to the east across Evergreen Road are zoned R2 Single Family Residential. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is developed with an office building. Properties to the north are developed with an office building in the Evergreen Meadows Conventiums. Property to the west across Central Park Boulevard is developed with an office building in parking deck. Property to the south is developed with an office building in TGI Friday's Restaurant. Properties to the east across Evergreen Road are developed with the Southfield Public Library and the Civic Center Complex and the Southfield Reformed Presbyterian Church. Total site contains 11.4 acres of land with 655.25 feet of frontage on Evergreen Road and a depth of 822.48 feet. Site plan proposed the construction of a 19,000 square foot mixed-use development on property located at 26555 Evergreen Road, west side of Evergreen Road between Civic Center Drive and the I-696 Service Drive. Parking required for the site is 142 spaces with 143 provided for the Overlay Development District agreement. Elevations indicate use of vernite block, EFS, metal canopies and panels, CMU and glass. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the site plan were, site plan review standards of the zoning ordinance, petitioners implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. The proposal is in accordance with Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting Southfield city center sub area for this parcel and the provisions of the ODD Overlay Development District Development Agrees.
Thank you, Terry. Petitioner present, would you like to make some comments, please?
Well, thank you for the time.
Give your name and address of the residence, please.
Matthew Wallerstein, Time Equities, 55 Fifth Avenue, 1541103. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the council today, Player of the Year, and we're excited about this rezoning and the site plan application to construct an approximately 15,000 square foot, first level, 4,000 square foot basement, retail building on the east side of 26555 Evergreen Road. Time Equities, my company, we're the sponsor of development. We are also the owner of both 26555 and 26533 Evergreen Road, also known as Travelers Towers 122. They're approximately 840,000 square feet total, 21 acres, 18 stories and 13 stories respectively. My company, Time Equities, is a 50-year-old full-service real estate development investment operator based out of New York City, owned by founder and CEO Francis Greenberg, with about 20 million square feet of real estate nationwide, moving to Canada and about, only about 2 million of that's located in New York, for us to spread across the Midwest and south. And we are in this region. Our portfolio is freely split between retail office and residential. We have an extensive resume of ground-up development, redevelopment, and feel extremely comfortable in this project here. We acquired the Travelers Towers property in May of 2013, and brought here was an opportunity to acquire an iconic pair of office towers and extremely well-located in, you know, the heart of a private business community, you know, across the street from the Sees Municipal Complex and an environment where the municipality was hand-in-hand with the business community in seeking change and advancement to improve the quality of the business district and the surrounding residential and retail opportunities. So we saw a part of the city of Southfield early on with Terry and Jeff to get their calls on improving the site and this opportunity to develop this freestanding building on the property. And what brought that about was really upon acquisition, you know, our office buildings are about 50% leased right now, so about 840,000 square feet, we have about 400,000 square feet leased to a great base of tenants, ranging from, on the larger side, we have Paul, Arnold Polk and Co., who now have been acquired by IHS, and our anchor tenant along with Action Benefit and Forsia in Tower One, but then we also have a number of smaller tenants, many of whom have been in the building since it was built. These are long-term tenants and they're very high-quality and, you know, builders in the community and job creators. And so we saw an opportunity to, you know, to leverage that existing tenant base and do a great job, you know, improving the property to hopefully increase occupancy, you know, up to 90%, going home the building over a long term. And, you know, in that vein, we intend to invest about $10 million of capital into the properties in the first few years of ownership, just in upgrades. Some of that will be cosmetic in the form of a lobby renovation, which is underway in both buildings. We are building a 3,500 square foot fitness facility, which will be free of use to tenants, private fitness facility for the exclusive use of the tenants, full-service block or facility inside the yard equipment. We're building art gallery inside the building. Our owner of my company is a tremendous painter of the arts, and years ago, Scott and I referred to art buildings where we extend museum-quality art displays into non-traditional display areas like, you know, office, not just eating the building itself, but in areas where we expect to find them in residential buildings and retail buildings, and both inside and outside. And he uses his own collection and encourages others to lend it to sell pieces of their own collection to the tar buildings, and we're going to be installing some of these artworks both inside the building and outside the building and incorporating it into the retail, proposed retail development as well. So again, early on, we realized a leasing challenge that lay ahead of us, which is, you know, keep the tenants we have and raise up the remaining vacancies. So in that effort, we went ahead and polled our tenants extensively and seeking feedback on all sorts of different things, you know, what's not, you know, what's good, what's bad about the building in terms of cantilets, systems, aesthetics, functionality, parking, location, amenities, et cetera, et cetera. We had a very long survey, and we, property managers did a great job getting everyone to fill it out, and we had, not just the management of the tenants filled out this survey, but we had the employees themselves, and we made it user-friendly with an online link, and we got a very strong response. And we got some really great feedback, and what brought about this project, I mean, was something we had thought about all along in terms of the opportunity that existed on the site to be abundant in parking in this area on the east side of the property and overlay development district opportunity. But one thing in particular we drilled down on with the tenants was, you know, what's the quality of the amenity base, both inside the building and outside the building, within easy walking, driving distance, and that's one of the things that was very clear to us in terms of response. It was almost unanimous that there's no food service and other convenience-related uses within, certainly within walking distance, but, you know, close drive distance even. We've seen more and more opportunities, the Jaden Developments with the Fridays and Elliott and Chipotle, but, you know, tenants want more, and certainly it's important to employers that they keep their employees closer to the building at lunchtime. And we have, you know, full-service cafe in the building, which people secretly like, you know, people want that, they want some other options, they want... a restaurant, a restaurant, and driving businesses when the buildings were full. But over time, retail businesses changed, and we just don't think those spaces are viable as retail amenities for a real operator's survival, because they're going to depend on that type of business. So with that feedback, that the tenants wanted more food service options, convenience stores and others, they asked for a bank branch, but it was really not food service, and we gave them examples of the types of things they may want, they asked for quick-service food as well as full-service restaurant, and we've heard a lot of just feedback in the community as well about needing a place for people to gather after hours and noticing that's not something that the City Center District has, and we think they could be very successful here. So that's really what brought it about, and then we were also very careful to, once we got the feedback from the tenants in the form of the survey, we went ahead and made sure as we were in the design phase of this project that we were sensitive to any adverse impacts that the development had on the site. We feel there's an abundance of parking for what we need on the site, but regardless of build, we're taking away some spaces here, and we're sensitive to that. So we met individually with representatives of several of our tenants, particularly the most directly impacted, and those would be, there's two tenants on the east side of the building, you can envision the Travelers Tower One building, on the first story, the first story extended beyond the footprint of the tower to the east side of the property, and there's a significant amount of square footage, around thirty thousand square feet which extended beyond the footprint of the tower on the east side, and that's primarily occupied by two tenants, Fox Sports at Detroit, they're the local affiliate of Fox, they broadcast all your local sports, sporting events, and they have a studio in the facility, and they're a great tenant, and a tenant that is very important for us to retain more, so, more important for us to retain this tenant than it is for us to build this building. And the other tenant is the Royal Corporate Credit Union, who recently acquired the Central Corporate Credit Union, so there's a lease assignment, but they've been in the building a long time, also very important, around a fourteen, fifteen thousand square foot tenant. And these two tenants are the ones that use this parking field predominantly. And we talked to them, we showed them what we were thinking about, showed them how it would impact their parking, we asked about their concerns, and both of them said in fairly clear language that they were in favor of the development, they thought it would benefit their employees, and they had concerns which we were able to address with the parking by agreeing to designate certain spaces, in the first row parking in front of the building is reserved, and those are separate spaces than those which we would consider to be dedicated, not dedicated, but for the retail building. So we believe that those two tenants who are the most directly impacted were completely satisfied that they could exist in harmony with the retail building. Fox Sports is only additional concern that we preserve its ability to their sign, which is on the exterior, which is the saw of the Tower One building. So we feel like, on balance, this will have tremendously positive impact, both on our ability to lease up the office building and our ability to retain existing tenants, and I think it will, in concert with the overall effort to redevelop the City Center District and make it more a live-play environment, and we'd be proud to do our part in that effort, because we do intend on meeting members of this community for a very long time and see that we're just another piece in the puzzle of an effort that started long before us, and hopefully we'll be around for a long time to contribute more than just this, but we think it's a very well-designed building, it's designed to reflect, to differentiate itself from the other, a few of the other retail buildings which have popped up down the street, but also to incorporate components of the existing office buildings, so we think it's a great design, we think it'll be very functional for the tenants we're seeking to attract, and that the site will be very cohesive once it's built. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. There was a question about the materials that Terry was using, could you show those to council?
Good evening, Mark Drain.
See, we have the site plan, I have seen them, but some of them they've said not, and I'd like to be able to display those.
Sure. Good evening, Mark, my name is Mark Drain, I'm with Broadway Architects, three two five zero zero Telegraph Row, three two fifty, Bingo Farmers, Michigan. Happy here to answer any questions, just want to let you know that we work very closely with planning commission, planning department, city council, and for a study session to make improvements to our plan. Such improvements were increased sidewalks widths along the front, increased pedestrian circulation areas throughout the entire site, we've added glass panels to the prominent back corners of the building to help soften the building for pedestrian access. We've added a tower, quarter tower, which is a three-dimensional solid tower, almost two stories high in the corner, in the southeast corner of the building, and the materials are in front of you, primary masonry at the base, a lot of transparency along the pedestrian part of the facade at the lower levels, we have a lot of areas for outdoor seating. The upper level is metal panels, which are a very soft contemporary beige color to the accent and the complement of the office building behind us.
Could you show where the, where that proposed restaurant is at the end of the building, and what kind it is, type it is?
Right now we're showing the building as being divided into three tenants, two restaurants, as proposed it would be, the restaurant, approximately five thousand square foot restaurant, which is worth about a hundred and fifty, one of the most sound buildings here. And then in the middle, we have designated as approximately five thousand feet of general retail, and then the downside would be a further, around four hundred square feet of food service again. And the tenant, although always in the rest of us, have a bar and a corner to it as well, but a general restaurant.
We'll hold the public hearing, and then the council has some more questions, don't you, you can have a seat, Terry, but they can't, they aren't, so. I'll hold for the public hearing at this point, if I wish to speak. Could you please give your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Elizabeth Marks Wilson, I live at two zero one eight four Evergreen Meadows Road in Southfield. I'm in the Evergreen Meadows condominium complex, and I'm on board for that. That complex that you're proposing is right in our backyard. We get to move there with the intent of being totally surrounded by commercial buildings. You have more retirees living in that complex than any other occupants. We thought this was going to be the place where we would be and be comfortable in our retirement, but we are already, two sides of our complex is Hawthorne Suite. All summer long, we're listening to the noise level over there, we're having to call the police because of fighting and shooting and motorcycles all times of the night. Now, you're talking the other side. If this complex goes as we get at the closest area to Evergreen, okay, you've got one small building there between our complex and the area you're speaking of. For the most part, the back of that small building, then, is just adjacent to that parking lot, and there's a wooden fence there, just as that wooden fence is separating us from Hawthorne Suite on two sides. So you have, we already have to call noise on this because you have trash being picked up any time of the morning, you have on the Hawthorne Suite side, you have trash just overflowing that we can see from our upper levels. You have, that pickup, we've had to get them to come a little bit later in the day, in the morning, because they were coming before seven o'clock in the morning. Recently, even when the snow was being removed from the parking lot at the Travelers Tower, they were taking some of the snow away, they were doing it in the middle of the night. They did some during the day, and then we're doing it in the middle of the night. If you build this, we are going to be adversely affected by it. You're saying that you post all the people who are in the building, but did you forget that you have a small condominium complex whose back door is right there? And there are a couple of residents here who will be right against part of that area that they're proposing. Their back windows, their back doors to their condos right there, there's no getting around it, and then you're looking at the traffic that is going to be coming in there, that's additional traffic, that's additional noise, and the people inside that building are only there during the workday, we have to be there at night, and I know these restaurants are not closing when the people leave to go home from work. I think that you need to be more concerned about your citizens who are paying taxes and we're getting absolutely nothing from the city but fire and police. We have to pay for everything else, including trash pickup. So at least you can consider some, small about mine here, when you're talking about bringing in businesses that are going to adversely affect us, you're saying they're not, but they will. I don't know if anyone has even half looked at it in terms of where our profit starts there, and where the actual condominiums are located. You have enough fast food, the gentleman was just saying that people had to walk too far, go too far to get to a restaurant, you have nothing but fast food restaurants up and down, and restaurants from below, from south of eleven mile down to ten mile. Now who can't walk ten minutes down to a restaurant? Every little space in Southfield or Evergreen, are you going to put a fast food restaurant everywhere? And I really think you need to give more thought to those of us who are paying taxes there, and I love seeing that building fold, because every time I see that parking lot fold, I say, our tax base, wonderful, but it, at least we have space now that separates us from that large building. But there will be none, and the people who put in there and park, they leave at the end of the day, they're not there all night and half the night with all that noise.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Geraldine Camato. The dynamics expressed in the situation by the previous speaker, I believe, have amplified where we are. The city of Southfield, like all American cities today, are part of an international commercial code. We have the U C C that dominates the municipal corporation, so the expenditures and the decisions made here are within the parameters of those who control the economy in this nation, and at the base of that is the Federal Reserve next to cartel, which issues a monetary instrument that is credit. So we are borrowing money and borrowing time, everything we invest in today is a loan, because when you spend a Federal Reserve credit instrument, you're spending a loan. So if you pay off whatever bills you think you paid off, you actually did not pay them off, you paid them with a loan, so they're never paid off. So we're getting increasingly in debt, but we do business as usual because we've been taught by the same folks to have a perception of reality that they want us to have so that we're easier to control. We are not allowed to make decisions about the resources of this nation, to use it for our own survival. Development is a word that's constantly used to cover up for the destruction of the natural economy. If we exist within the natural economy, we would have control on our food supply, our fuel supply, our clothing, shelter, we do not. All of it is under the control of international entrepreneurs who are outlaws, and as far as what this nation is supposedly based on as a republic, what's left of the republic is very little, it's been buried under a private commercial jurisdiction, and we have lost the ability to reason and to understand what liberty is really about. We are trading, as one professor actually put it, we're trading in our human relationships and eventually our spirit for some material possessions. Most of us are engaged in mercenary activities, we are not in control of the work that we do, it is described for us, we hire ourselves out to perform the tasks given to us by our absentee overlords through their local agents. And unless we take a different tack on everything, our communities are being destroyed, our lives are being ruined, and I think the testimony of the previous speaker is just one excellent example of what is happening in many sectors. Not many people come here and speak and testify. I have come here too often to suit most of you, and I've been heated rudely because I come here, I'm an elder of this society, but elders are considered patronizing, I mean, people to be patronized and not respected for their wisdom or their experience, those who want to share what they have learned. I have mentioned to you, the business establishment in Albuquerque, New Mexico, regards people's lives as merchandise, and my family encountered organized crime within the courts, my grandson was sold like a piece of merchandise to the highest bidder, and whoever controls the child protection services and all these other outfits that are controlled by the same folks. We are on borrowed time and borrowed money. This gentleman that spoke, he's well-trained in his profession, but New York City, I lived there a couple of years, New York City is a prime example of building against nature. That island was once a beautiful island with all the resources that a human being needed to do, needed to have to survive independently of the globalists. Now, you're dependent on them to give you your job description, and you must perform like a trained monkey in order to get your living, in order to get your possessions, and we have no real community in connection. And it's interesting to me, recently I heard on NPR an announcement that these fake animal rights activists or these fake animal lovers, they don't love animals, they're just about separating us from animals or our livestock. They said that Central Park, which is the closest thing to a natural environment in New York City, wasn't fit for horses, that those horses that pull those carts around in the Central Park need to be taken out of there because it wasn't a fit place for horses. But New York City is a fit place for humans, and we know that development, and as more nations are becoming developed, so are these social illnesses like cancer, Alzheimer's, autism, and all these epidemics of mental, emotional, and even spiritual malaise that are overcoming this nation. While we still have some resources, mental, emotional, and physical to do something with, we didn't engage ourselves to do something. And with maybe the last, the throw of a bone, we don't need a bone, we need to take control of our own lives. Thank you, Mr. Forcaccio.
Sure, I wanted you to finish your sentence.
Oh, you're welcome, I'll have you to finish my sentence. Thank you very much.
Sure, anybody else? Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Glendale Davis, I live at two zero.
Sure, we can hear you, just speak right into the mic.
My name is Glendale Davis, I live at two zero one three five Evergreen Meadows Road, Southfield four eight zero seven six, in the Evergreen Meadows condominium, and I just wanted to speak on what our previous, the previous lady said. I personally live right up against, you know, the condo where the wooden fence is, so I can attest to the noise, everything she said, not only that, during the summer, we have constant noise, people walking back and forth through the parking lot, you know, making noise, we, until they fixed the fence, there were actually people coming from the, coming from the parking lot, going through our.
My name is Pamela Davis. I live at two zero one three five Evergreen Meadows Road, Southfield four eight zero seven six, in the Evergreen Meadows condominium. And I just wanted to, uh, speak on what, um, our previous, the previous lady said. I personally live right up against, you know, in the condo where the, um, the wooden fence is, so I can attest to the noise, everything she said. Not only that, during the summer, we have, um, constant noise, people walking back and through, back and forth through the parking lot, you know, making noise. We, um, until they fixed the fence, there were actually people coming from the, um, coming from the parking lot, going through our condominium to get to who knows where. Um, I think that we need, a wooden fence would not keep out the traffic. I think that they're proposing for the project that they're proposing. Um, I am not so much against the project as I am the fact that the noise level, the fact of the different types of individuals that would be coming back and forth, you know, within the area, uh, bringing down, like our personal, I think it would bring down our property value, that, um, we would no longer be in control of our area, of our, of our living condition. So, basically, that's my feelings on this project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Why don't you come up front here and have a seat up here, and then we can talk with this gentleman.
I'll sit right here now. Mr. President, my name is Gerard Malam. My address is Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. This council's legal notice for this public hearing, ZR thirteen twenty-one, was never, never, not ever, never ever posted by this city council on this city's legal notice bulletin board. But you folks had no problem posting your picture of yourselves outside these chambers, in the hallway, near the legal notice bulletin board. Why did you folks post your picture but not this legal notice, ZR thirteen twenty-one? Paradoxically, it seems that everybody but this council posts their legal notices on Southfield's legal notice bulletin board. For example, both the state of Michigan and the federal government posts their legal notices right outside these chambers. Even the US District Court for the Western District of Michigan posts their legal notices in Southfield, on Southfield's legal notice board. And Southfield isn't even in the Western District. We are in the Eastern District. If another district court can post their legal notices just outside these chambers, why can't you folks? Where is the transparency? What are you folks covering up? What are you hiding? Your bad spelling, your poor grammar, your inability to write a proper legal notice? Or are you simply trying to slip this one past the goalie tonight? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Council President. My name is Andre Davis. I live at two zero one four eight Evergreen Meadows Road. I'm also within the Evergreen Meadows complex. Um, the beginning statement stating that, uh, this proposal would have no adverse effect on the surrounding parcels, I'm challenging that statement. Uh, like my neighbors, um, I foresee what was proposed, be it, uh, increasing noise and increase in traffic. I mean, I'm hearing things like, uh, all these things were done to benefit the tenants that are in that building, but I think those benefits to those tenants is going to be a detriment to the surrounding residents, uh, those surrounding parcels. You're talking, and they're talking about adding a fitness center, an art gallery, and I heard mention of a bar being part of the, uh, you know, the restaurant establishment. I mean, I don't want this turned into main street corridor over, okay? You have at least three strips of, you know, food services and other types of activities along that street between ten, nine, and eleven mile. I don't know all the details. I mean, are we supposed to add like a roundabout type area and a boulevard? Um, I don't see how all this is going to work, okay? Um, as the other neighbor said, we have a parking lot area that's separating us from the travelers to our community. You're talking about putting another type of establishment, you know, in the middle of that. Um, that noise is going to be unacceptable. And this wooden fence, I mean, that wooden fence has been torn down on multiple occasions, just from the hall through the suites and through travelers, and we have to complain over and over again. If you're talking about people going to a bar area, hanging out, drinking, who knows what's going to be walking through our, our neighborhoods? I mean, this is the area where we live, okay? People come here, they work, they want to relax, and then they're going to go home wherever they're going. But yet, we're going to have to listen to all this and deal with all the people that's going to be taking, availing themselves of all this activity and services. So, uh, I personally, uh, do not see positive benefit for the area that, that I live. Um, I do not enjoy the fact of being surrounded by commercial, uh, businesses and activities that's right above my doorstep. So, that's the script I want to say.
My name is Krista English. I live at two zero one 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 Evergreen Meadows Road, and obviously, I too am a member of the Evergreen Meadows Condominium Community. And I also, obviously, am opposed to this proposal. While I think that the developers are doing wonderful things within the Travelers Building, uh, for the community of workers there, um, and there to be wanted, uh, this new proposal to put this building into the parking lot is going to have an absolute adverse effect on us. Excuse me, I think that, aside from the noise that's been mentioned and the traffic coming and going, there's also going to be issues like garbage. And I happen to live where my windows overlook the back of the proposed buildings, so there will be not so nice garbage to look at. And also, whatever goes on behind commercial establishments will be facing us, because obviously, the fronts of the building is going to face Evergreen Meadows, excuse me, Evergreen Road. So, we're going to be looking at the behind-the-scenes activity and listening to it as well. So, I guess I would finish by saying, who of you would like to buy my condo?
Yeah.
I don't think anybody in their right mind would want to buy a con, buy a condo that overlooks garbage, essentially.
Yeah.
So, I'm really concerned about that, and I would like for you to think about this from our perspective. Thank you.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three four six zero four three nine. Matt and Mark, before you leave here tonight, I want you to talk to these residents and consider putting up a concrete post and panel wall, which is similar to a brick wall, but it is not a brick wall, and a concrete post and panel wall is easier to maintain.
Would you please, you please address the council?
I'm speaking at the moment.
I know you're speaking. I wish you were speaking.
You couldn't agree to just engage in this kind of, uh, interaction with me. I'm not going to verbal volley with you tonight. I want to make a point. And if you heard everything else about the world, maybe not pertaining to what we've been talking about tonight, certainly you could listen to me.
I'm listening to you, and that's why I wanted you to...
Okay, well, then I'd like you to be uninterrupted, and I'd like to continue. Thank you. So I want that thought to be put out there. Um, these residents express, express some very valid points. I have talked to you, Terry Crowe, and you when you were council president, about the ramifications of these poor wooden fences that you guys have the audacity to call decorative fences. This is a prime example of what they're going through, what residents in Franklin River Apartments have gone through with Ramco Burschinson's, uh, Tale Twelve Mall. So, I'm asking this city, for these residents' sake, to consider putting up a concrete post and panel wall. It's similar to brick, and it's easier to maintain. I want you guys to consider that brick wall with some kind of landscaping, since you pride yourselves on landscaping, to make their quality of life better, so they don't have to look at that. You guys know that Hawthorne Suites is on jam, not just on the weekends, but every day. I think you need to explain the ramifications, or the benefits, if any, of what rezoning to an ODD is, and what it means. You need to explain that to these residents and be a little bit more specific about it. And then I want to know who is Southfield HS Development? Who are they? What type of business is it? Are they nonprofit? What do they do? You can't just come here and real quickly approve rezoning without being concerned about whether or not it would affect the residents. Now, I might be in favor of something like this, and when I spoke to Mr. Drain, I initially was in favor of it, but I didn't know that residents felt as strongly as they felt about some of these things that they mentioned here tonight. So, I'm saying to council, so that Mark and Matt can hear me, get with these residents before you leave here tonight, and talk to them to find out specifically what do they need for their quality of life. I like the fact that you guys are trying to repopulate the area, but you're making that into a downtown. Cornerstone Development is the downtown, which is near Northland. That's the DDA. Why aren't you guys taking some of these projects over near Northland?
Your time is up.
How much time did I have?
Five minutes.
I didn't have five minutes, because you talked for a minute and a half.
Please sit down.
So now, you listened to the other young lady, and it wasn't even relevant about this, um, public hearing. At least I'm talking about the public hearing. I'm talking about the public hearing, and I'd like to finish my sentence.
When I end your conversation...
Did you allow someone else to finish their sentence?
Officer, officer, I want this person either to sit down or leave this room.
Did you allow the person to finish their sentence?
Mr. Administrator, could you please ask the officer back there, either have this lady to sit down or be removed from the room?
I'll finish my sentence. You guys need to be a little bit more specific about what's going on here, and stop rubber stamping everything. If you guys do that and make the residents happy, I'm in favor of this project, but make these residents happy first.
Thank you, officer. Anyone else wishes to speak? I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
Um, Mr., um, for context, question, uh, we're going to take the rezoning first.
Yes, yes.
Uh, can we proceed with that?
Sure. Uh, is that okay?
Yes.
Yes, that's the proper procedure, uh, if we, if I could.
I'd, uh, if you have something...
Well, I mean, there were some issues that were brought up about noise and garbage in the fence hours of operation that maybe the, um, the developer could address now, that we can incorporate into the ODD agreement before, before any questions get asked. When you talk about, excuse me, when you talk about the fence, though, you're beyond... I want to point that out first, but... Go ahead.
So, the depth, the depth of the development lines up with the office service development to the north, so there wouldn't be any required customer wall. But that's not to say that the developer might, uh, address some of the concerns Evergreen by the residents. Again, the development is no further north than the existing building, and it's closer to Evergreen Road, and lines up with the depth of the office service building to the north. I believe the fence and wall is here, and some of the concerns that the residents have regarding noise and garbage pickup and maybe screening that the developer could address at this point.
Sure.
You know, I might, um, I'm sure, sure.
So, I'd like to start by saying that, you know, I, I fully intend to be sympathetic and respectful of the needs and the, um, the, um, the words of the, the residents of the, um, of the Evergreen Meadows community. Um, you know, they're right in the sense that my, my speech didn't focus on the office tenants and what we can do to improve their lives, and obviously, I'm selfishly focused on that, given that's the property required. So, we're, you know, yes, we, the intent of this project, um, is to increase the value of the property. And then, just to be more specific, Southfield HS Development, I realize that can be confusing to see these, you know, these LLCs with these mystical names, but Southfield HS Development LLC is a, is a limited liability corporation wholly owned by Time Equities. Um, and, uh, it's a, it's an entity that was established specifically to own this property, and for no other purpose. Um, so, when it, when it comes to interaction with this development and the community, obviously, you know, we believe it will be beneficial. We believe it will not have an adverse impact on the traffic patterns and on nuisance. And one thing that we're specifically sensitive to is, is the nuisance factor. Um, that was something when we were meeting early on with Terry and Jeff and other folks in the city, um, city government, that it was, it was observed to us that, that there were concerns about some of the, the existing retail establishments and their noise problems and their trash collection, and that, you know, obviously, there's discussions that we avoid that. And we have no incentive to add to the problems, obviously, and every incentive to make sure that this building coexists peacefully with its surroundings and adds value rather than detracts. And, you know, I, I would argue, when it comes to property values, that, that in terms of the dynamics, the current dynamics of urban development and suburban development, that, you know, a local play environment is desirable to new residents, and that they'd like to see amenities, retail amenities within walking distance. And perhaps I should have been more specific. We absolutely not our intention to tenant this building with, you know, all due respect to Taco Bell and McDonald's, it is not our respect, it is not our intention to tenant this building with Taco Bell and McDonald's. In fact, we, we, we can't even consider it, given the aesthetics of the building, because they require their own aesthetics. So, we, we, we fully intend, and are resolute to tenant this building with tasteful establishments that would be considered a positive amenity to both the surrounding business owners, the businesses, the tenants, the office tenants, the, you know, the retail tenants, and certainly the residents. Um, and I think that I, you know, would like to make an effort to interact with folks in the adjacent residential realm, because that's something frankly, we have not done. And it sounds like we absolutely should do that. Um, there's no reason for there to be poor relations. In fact, given our desire, our intention to own this, these buildings, office buildings for a very long time, um, it would behoove us to do what we've done with our adjacent commercial developers and reach out to the residents and the Presidential Association and hear their concerns. You know, honestly, I never given, I had not given thought to the fence that separates our property from theirs, and, um, whether it was, you know, adequate, or, uh, whether there were noise issues going back and forth. I, I haven't seen any personally, but, you know, perhaps I need to understand from their perspective more of what's going on. I, I would, again, point out, as Terry pointed out, that our proposed development does not extend any further north than the existing buildings, and sits on the far southeast corner of the site. And the north, um, the north elevation of the building is roughly two hundred feet from the closest residential building. So, um, and in terms of line of sight, I guess we'll be looking at the north side of our building, which I actually think is rather aesthetically pleasing. There's an outdoor seating area, there's a roof, you know, there's a glass facade up to ten feet on the north side of the building, facing that residential development with a metal canopy and the metal panel. The same aesthetics on the north side are basically mirrored on the east elevation that faces Evergreen Road. So, I really don't think they'll be looking at an eyesore. We're also very sensitive to the trash removal issue. We can't have dumpsters piling up in our parking lot, because it would adversely impact our tenants. So, in that spirit, we have, um, a, a part of the fifteen Dallas square foot building is a seven hundred square foot, um, trash room, and that's where the compactor will be stored, so it'll be shared between the retail tenants and the trash, you know, the, when rubbish removal takes place, the truck will back into a roll-up door, remove the compactor, empty its contents, and then exit the site, um, you know, the same way they came in. So, we believe we've addressed the, you know, rubbish removal issue, because it's all going to be building inside. There's a small freestanding trash, um, trash dumpster south of the building, um, but it is fully enclosed, and again, you know, through our rules and regulations, we'll seek to regulate the use of that trash enclosure, as well as regulate the schedule for deliveries, and ensure that these uses that we put in the building are not only harmonious to begin with, high-quality, um, you know, adhere to the values of the community, both the resident and the business community, but also are respectful of the hours, that this is not just a place where people work. I think it's easy to forget that when you get lost in the, you know, lost in the middle of the, the IRI's office building, that this is, you know, a development that's immediately adjacent to residential area. And I think what this building does is help build a transition between the residential area and the office building, because it's, it's a little bit lower in scale, it adds, you know, amenities that people, you know, people don't have reason to go inside the office building. They'll have a reason to go in this retail building. It's going to be outdoor seating, and we're building an extension of the eight-foot wide sidewalk from the roundabout that the city is building. sidewalk from the roundabout to the city building all the way up Evergreen Road, so that these, these residents will be able to easily walk to our site and use our retail establishments. And, you know, we hope to make it a very aesthetically pleasing place and a pleasant place to hang out.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would encourage you to meet with the residents and look at all their issues that, that you can have some impact on. I personally want to go over there and see exactly what they're talking about, so I'm going to ask you ladies, one of you to give your name, address, and phone number to Clerk, so that I can contact you. I want to see that, I think we all should see that. It's one thing to hear about it, but I want to see it. And I'm sure you don't want to have a bad relationship with people. I don't doubt that. But we are hearing things we have no concept, no idea about. So, we, we can't, we can't allow, cannot allow our residents to be negatively impacted by any development, doesn't matter who or what it is. They, they absolutely are, deserve to have quality of life that they're accustomed to. And obviously, right now, it is compromised even, even at this time. So I want to see that personally. But, um, I guess I'm a little concerned that right now, I, um, this overlay development district, I think, I think there is a potential downside to it, and I'm, I'm not sure we understand all of the ramifications of it. I, I'd like to have a, a discussion with the council to have a better understanding of what is, how it works. I know, at least I'm told by Mr. Crowe, that, uh, any changes do have to come back to the council, any, any changes whatsoever. But I'm a little uncomfortable at this point in time that there may be a downside to that. And I, I don't want us to move forward. And, you know, Evergreen Road is, we're planning a beautiful road. We want everything that's there to be aesthetically pleasing. We don't want any adverse impact on, on any residence, business, or residential. This is a premier development that we're doing on Evergreen Road, and everything has to be just right, has to be. And I'm sure that's what you want, because you have a lot at stake here too. So, we've got to, we've got to resolve the issues for the residents, and so I again ask that you meet with them and get their concerns, and then come back to us and let us know what's, you know, what, how we can, how we can work these things out, what impact you can have over that, if you, if you would do that. That's all for now, Mr. President.
Senator, who is first, Mr. Seibert, then Mr. Moss?
I was going to suggest that we put the motion for the rezoning and take that first and put that on the floor, so I'm going to move, um-
Can I hear it from Mr. Moss first?
Oh, okay, I was going to, and let him talk, but I was going to-
Okay, go ahead.
Put the rezoning, so we're taking one thing at a time.
Okay.
Um, it'll be easier for people to follow along. So, I move the, um, uh, the R 1321s rezoning request of Mark Drain, Rob Boye Associates on behalf of the owner of Southfield H S Development for, um, creation of an O D D at the existing, um, regional center of development and on Evergreen Road in 26555.
Is it supported?
Offered.
Okay, and then, this is moved by Mr. Seibert, supported by Mr. Moss, and Mr. Moss says to floor.
Wonderful, thank you. And just so the residents know, we've just moving forward with the rezoning, we haven't gotten to the site plan yet. It's actually not, it's very different. And I do want to talk about the overlay development district because the, the issues and concerns that you brought before us are incredibly valid, and I think we're listening to them, and I think we're hearing them. And regardless of whether or not the site plan moves forward on this project, you're bringing up concerns that we do need to talk about on city council. We are having, we are going to be creating this walkable corridor, regardless of the vote tonight, we're creating this walkable corridor on Evergreen Road between 10 Mile and 11 Mile. We have a $13 million reconstruction of Evergreen Road that's going to expand the sidewalks. As was mentioned, it's going to, there's going to be a boulevard, there's going to be traffic circles at the entrance to the library, there's going to be a traffic circle at the entrance to City Hall, uh, and we're going to have pedestrian-friendly amenities. And you're right, we are going to be putting more people on the street, um, but it was mentioned that this is not Main Street in Royal Oak, and we need to make sure that as we move forward with the development of this district, we do keep that Southfield standard intact. And I think you've actually brought up a very good point in terms of noise, in terms of, of safety. I, you're right, I wouldn't want to live in a chaotic, loud type of atmosphere. But I think the solution to that is to completely engage with our police department as we make this transition to this walkable corridor, which is going to happen regardless of the vote here today, just with the construction of Evergreen Road. How do we make sure that our police is policing for a walkable district that we've never had before? So, I, I will make sure that we take this message back to our police chief, who I have 100% faith in, Chief Hawkins, to make sure that as this area of Southfield builds in a different type of way than we have been used to in the past, what are we going to do? What is our strategy to make sure that the residents here and also the people who will be on the street are, are in a safe environment? Because we don't have that type of downtown atmosphere, and if we're going to make this transition, we need to make sure that he's using, uh, the absolute, uh, up-to-date needed strategies for a police force to make sure that residents, businesses, and the people that we want to put on the street, it, it, to create this vibrancy, this walkable corridor, are protected and, 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 and in a safe environment. So, um, your message will be taken back to our police department, uh, and I'll make sure that, uh, our police engages with the residents, engages with the business community to make sure that there is some sort of harmony, because I wouldn't want to live in, in a chaotic atmosphere as you, as you painted. And I, I don't think that, that it doesn't behoove the developer to have that type of atmosphere either, um, because nobody will want to work there. If, if it's that type of, of unsafe environment, nobody's going to even want to work there, let alone live there. So, uh, I, I support the rezoning because, you know, about a quarter mile up the road, we have the same rezoning. So, I mean, it just, it, 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 uh, it goes with the, the vision for this district. But I do want to make sure that our administration does bring this back to our police department and make sure as we're transitioning, uh, you know, I know that a resident had mentioned about, uh, an incident, a non-fatal shooting incident, and our police chief was on it right as it happened. And it hasn't happened, no incidents like that have happened again in that parking lot where it happened. He's, he's been on the job for about a year and a half, and he took the ground running as a police chief and had listened to the concerns of residents. And as a result, crime is, is decreasing in the city of Southfield, I think because of a lot of things that he's been bringing forward to the department. So, I, I think that it's who's us as a council to make sure that he is on task, that our police department is on task to make sure as we make this transition, we still live in a safe, healthy Southfield environment.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I, just as a follow-up, I didn't hear people talk about crime. I heard them talk about a lot of noise and a lot of disruption to their day and just to their general living. I mean, certainly we don't want any crime over there, and I think every precaution would be taken. I'm sure the developer has no intention of attracting anything there that would create crime, so I don't, I don't think that's the issue.
Yeah, I think the shooting on the other side.
The regular noise, the regular, the dumpsters, the, all the noise that would happen, and then the additional noise with the parking and the people that would have brought into here, because that's what I believe I heard-
No, you heard shooting on the other side.
Well, all right, but that's, that's, that's something we certainly don't want to hear. I mean, we don't want to have that happen. But, but on a day-to-day, um, situation, what I heard from you mostly was the disruption of noise at bad times, uh, not being able to live in your own homes with the normal peace and quiet you should expect in your home. That, that was the biggest thing that I heard. We certainly don't want shootings, we certainly don't want any type of, of nighttime activity or criminal activity at all, and that's, that is something that can, can be controlled. That's the, that's the, you know, just what new development brings to that area. I'm concerned with what you're living with right now. I'm very concerned about that, and I do want to talk to you about it, and I do want to go over there and see. Give me a tour. Go ahead. Thank you.
Is anyone else, Mr. Frasier?
Yes. Through Terry, Mr. Crowe, was this, did the, the residents of, Mr. Terry, did they get, uh, notice that they were going to be, uh, finding, that this, you have, or this project was going to take place, so they had an opportunity to come to the, find the area?
Yes, they, they were notified through the planning commission workshops and public hearing, and we, we did not receive any comments from any residents at that time. So this is new, new to us tonight.
This is all fresh tea for dinner. Yeah, we don't, we don't allow people to shout from the audience.
Just a minute, I'll-
You're in a different city.
Just raise your hand, and I will recognize you in a minute. I got to hear Mr. Frasier.
Yeah, I just wonder, uh, if we did send it out, because I know that, uh, we have a 350-foot, but in some, in certain instances where we know that it's going to be, um, maybe a little naughty, we expand that to send, send out notices even beyond the 350 feet from, from the project, so. But I'm, I'm surprised that no one showed up at the, the hearings for the, the finding area.
The, the property manager and the association, if they're registered, would have gotten the notice as well. In addition to the people within 350.
I'm not going to open up the public hearing, but I'm going to have you come forward, the lady, raise your hand, come forward over here, give your name and address again, and, tell me what, uh, do we wish to say? Give you a couple of minutes to do that.
Krista English, 20111, Evergreen Meadows Road, Southfield. We did receive the announcement from the planning commission, however, it meant nothing. It is legal jargon, and, uh, in fact, they called about it to see what it meant. And I was told that the reason there was a phone number on there was to get people to call. It seems to me that when you send out a legal notice, if you think about the audience, the people who would understand it would be the lawyers, not just plain old residents of the area. So I think that accounts for why you didn't get a response. It's just truly did not understand what it was talking about. There's a whole long, um, list of the amount of space involved, but the rest of the words meant really not much at all, and that's why.
But just let me say this to you, if you get a legal notice of any kind or anything happening in your area, you better call that number, because that's why the notices are sent out, so that we get some information from you and get some input, so that we can make the call appear. So, uh, I hear you and, and, uh, you understand exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, it would be nice to have included a paragraph that explains in layman's terms, not legally binding, obviously, what this is about, and we would have been honored.
The next time you get something legal, you get a telephone number, make sure you call, okay? No, I'm not going to open up the public hearing again, but I would like to make a comment. Council, all through? Yes. And, and Terry, I think that, uh, what I see, not only that, they had a legal notice and, and they didn't understand it, but I think that there ought to be the president of the association was here. I, I know that, that this may not be in the city center corridor, is that, is that in that? Or is it, do you know? Is it in it?
Yes.
Well, I, I would hope that when you get, get the meetings for that city center group when they meet, that you send also notice, an agenda, to the head of that subdivision, so that they're aware of what's going on in the backyard. I mean, there's a, there's a, you know, this has been going on for 30 years, and, and, you know, you had, uh, B Ws over there one time, you had a, you know, a Mexican place in there, um, uh, we cleaned that all up, there used to be Southland Athletic Club in there, and, uh, and now we, and the building went into foreclosure, and now we have someone who's willing to reestablish that building to the grandeur in which it once was. And, um, and part of that city center is not only to provide commercial buildings and restaurants, but also to interject residential, and that's why you have the walls as part of this plan. And I suggest that, that you get a hold of our planner and come in and see what is really on the board for those, uh, for the entire site, because there's some interesting coming in, and I, and I, may or may not make you happy, but it's going to be pretty dense. And, uh, but, uh, you know, we have to have support for, for not only the residents, but also for the people who work here, and this is a major corridor, this Evergreen Road. It's the only northwest road really the city owns, the rest of our county and state owned. And so, this is going to be probably in the future one of the major streets, and of course, the roundabout is going to be at the light where the library is, so that also will be between you and this development. So, uh, uh, Mr. Seibert, uh, is ready to make the motion, and, and, uh, I just want you to get more involved, and I want to make sure that you leave your name with Mr. Crowe, that you be notified when the city center meetings are held, and, um, uh, and then you'll see the full picture, because it keeps getting larger, but we really intend to, to make the city come alive again, because if we don't, you know, it's, we don't know what the future would be in consequences to not developing. So, uh, anyway, uh, no, I, I, no, I'm going to close, because I'm going to have Terry give them a call, and Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. I would just, the notice that you referenced, I agree with you. I would like to think that, um, a cover letter maybe, or we're sending it to residents to say attach you a final legal notice, this is to notify you of development, if you have any simplifying. I, I do agree, I, I sit here, I think, we do send a cover letter. What does the cover letter say?
Through the chair, the, um, the cover letter says that you will be given at least three opportunities to speak. We list all of the workshops of the planning commission and the public hearing, and then attach the legal notice to that. That's the resident notice that goes out. So, but I, I agree that we can do a better job. We'll make sure that we do a better job, um, corresponding with the homeowners associations,
we said they can get that.
And, um, we'll invite them to future city center board meetings.
Mr. Seibert?
I wasn't finished. Thank you. The other-
Ladies and gentlemen.
The other, um, issue that I wanted to talk about is that this development, because it's residential and the, the homes that are by Evergreen Road, I think we should do a special outreach to them, going over our whole development for Evergreen Road and our development and what our plans are. Because I'm surprised that you're kind of, um, it's almost like your first introduction to this, and we've been talking about this for over a year. There are some very clear plans and objectives. We want more activity and we want more people walking. You are now going to be in an area that we are hoping will become a very robust, people walking and enjoying the city, and you must be a part of it if you live there. So I, I would ask that we do, um, through the chair, that we would consider making a special effort for the residents of, um, I guess that would include the town center, so it'd just be a residential outreach to talk about our, uh, city center, um, this vision and what our plans are and what it's going to look like. There are some people who may not want to live in that type of environment. There are people who will be very excited about it, but we want you to be informed and I'm not saying we didn't, because we've been talking about this, and I'm kind of surprised, um, that you, because you're right there on Evergreen Road, are not just really, um, uh, been informed of it for whatever reason, so I just think an extra outreach would be good for us to do.
They don't even know about the Tresce Swamp, do they?
No, you got to tell them about it.
Anyway, Mr. Seibert?
I believe that our vision will actually improve your property values. I added to the, um, the remaking of Evergreen Road and the other plans that we have, um, and again, I agree with the mayor, some people may not want to live in a walkable district, but a lot of people do. And I believe that, um, once we have the infrastructure in, that's going to start this spring, we're going to see a, a traffic calming, and traffic will be going slower on Evergreen Road, um- Um, we're doing, um, non-motorized pathways, a whole number of street amenities, landscaping. Um, it's something you're gonna be very proud of. And I think that it will spill over onto your property values. That is not to say, uh, I'm not taking anything away from your argument about noise or intrusion. Um, we all want to live in a quiet enjoyment of our homes. I do, we, that's something, to me, is a right. Uh, so, um, uh, I wanna reserve my other comments till when we get to the site plan. I have a number of, uh, specific concerns. But, uh, for now, we have a motion on the floor that's been moved, seconded, Mr. President, for discussion about the rezoning request to an ODD.
It was for approval? It was for approval?
Yes.
Uh, clearly color all things, this would be for the approval of?
The zoning change.
ZR one three two one.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
I'm saying yes, but with reservations.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Mr. Pecati?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passed.
Cherry, the other thing that you might.
Need a, need a.
I know something, I just wanted, before I just thought here. Also want, uh, maybe they have not been invited to see what's really gonna happen to Evergreen Road now that in December, the final documents were, were put into the state, and, uh, they can actually see what, uh, what, uh, everything is really gonna look like.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Almost a thirteen million dollar beautification, really.
The, the engineer held a open house earlier in the fall, and it might be appropriate to have a second open house with all the updated plans to invite all the residents and businesses again to come. And, um, we can share the larger vision, so I think that extra public outreach is appropriate. And we'll work with the city administration on preparing another open house meeting.
Mr. Fraser, sixteen twenty four?
Yeah, and move that be introduced, orders number sixteen twenty four.
It's moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Moss, all in favor, seeing the five, they say aye?
Aye.
Mayors, motion carries. I'm gonna go on, move it past seat for a moment, uh, and go to site plan A.
Um, I'd like to move.
Mr. Seibert?
Put it on the floor for discussion. I'd like to move site plan thirteen oh nine, um, for this project that we've just discussed, um, for the total age of development, for nine hundred, or nineteen hundred square foot mixed-use development at twenty six five by five Evergreen Road.
Order.
What is your want? Table?
No, I, I am moving to put it on the table for discussion. So that we can discuss, I have some things I wanna.
It's moved by Mr. Seibert, supported by Mr. Fraser, that, that this be put on the table for discussion purposes, all in favor, seeing the five, they say aye?
Aye.
Mayors, motion carries. Mr. Seibert?
Okay, um, I don't wanna be loaded, but we're, we have a motion on the floor. Um, so I wanna discuss, um, the site plan specifically. Um, first of all, um, I wanna say to Time Equities, I was thrilled when, uh, your company bought Travelers Building. Um, you've got a great name, it's a great company, and for you to invest in Southfield, uh, for me personally, uh, I thought it was, it was a coup for us. Um, I'm also pleased that you share, uh, our vision for public art, and that you wanna put something on this, on this quarter. Um, I have some concerns about, um, what you're proposing. And, um, I am for the density, uh, the walkability, um, adding amenities to Evergreen Road. Uh, as has been mentioned several times tonight, we're, uh, we are investing thirteen million dollars in, in, most of it grand money, um, that, that we've secured to redo Evergreen Road, turn it into a boulevard, uh, to dress it up. It's gonna look, you know, and over, through the course of the next year of construction, it's going to be a total turnaround from what's out there now, with all the cracks and potholes and, uh, two lanes, three lanes, if the, the road goes a little crazy, um, in each direction. But, um, I, uh, I'm, I'm not pleased with the proposed building. Um, and I, I wanted to, um, first of all, say to, um, Mr. Drain, um, I know Rodgway, it's a great firm. And, uh, Rodgway, over the years, it's been a company that, architectural company that's been around for decades, has built some landmark properties in Southfield. The Northland Theater, um, the, um, Ira Kaufman Funeral Home, uh, the addition to the, nineteen eighty-six addition to the school board office are all Rodgway projects. Um, with, with all the money that is going in, in our vision for Evergreen Road, um, I'm not saying, uh, that what you're proposing is, um, a bad design. I just, I was just hoping for something a little more, uh, something a little more, um, splashy, having more of a presence. Um, you know, when you, when you look just down the street at the shops at Park Place, uh, I'm not saying you replicate that, but it does have a presence, because they, they've made it higher with, uh, with the dormers and so on on the second floor. Um, even the small strip building at the corner of Ten Mile and Southfield, that houses a Sprint store and I think it's Checker's Hamburgers. Um, it's a very interesting little building that they built. It's got design elements to it that, um, you know, it's eye-catching. Uh, so I, I personally would like to see something that is just a little more dramatic. Um, I am wondering, uh, if you have considered, um, even a two-story building? Uh, a building that we've already approved down the street on Evergreen, um, south on Evergreen and across the street will have a second floor. Again, a little more presence as you drive by. Um, I'd also, um, uh, would like to, um, uh, see the, um, uh, the proposed outdoor patio moved to the south side of the building, away from Evergreen Meadows. Uh, I'd also, if, if you're gonna have a patio, I would require no outdoor speaker, uh, so there isn't music or announcements outside. Um, that'd be a quiet patio. And again, take it from the north side, which is closer to Evergreen Meadows, put it on the, on the south side until, um, if that's, that's, again, I'm not telling you you have to do that. These are the feedback I would give. Um, uh, Miss, um, Gerald said this, um, but, uh, I, um, had written a note to myself. Could Time Equities, um, put up a, a masonry fence? Replace that wooden fence, put up, it would be a sound wall. Um, we are on another project that we've recently approved with resident feedback. We're looking at a ten-foot wall for sound and for just separation, uh, from residential. And in the other case, it's, um, a single-family home, but it's the same thing. The backyard's a lot, uh, a commercial property. Um, the, um, uh, one other, um, question I had, uh, and it's, it's on the map, and either Mr. Crowe or, um, Mr. Drain, you could, uh, the, there's a green strip. I wasn't quite sure what that was between the parking, um, is that just, it, uh, between the existing? Yeah, exactly, that, is that? It, it does. It's just a lawn?
Thank you.
Okay. And I couldn't tell from, obviously, I'm looking at black and white.
Through the chair, Mr. Seibert? Um, I believe, um, Mr. Waller, he mentioned, um, that the, the green space was put there so that those parking spaces to the west of it were reserved for Fox Sports and the other, so that, that's a defining line, so that they could preserve those spaces away from the.
Yeah, I, I got that, I just didn't know.
Yeah, it is.
If it's a fence, or, you know, what, what it was, that's all. I just wanted to be clear about, um, what you're proposing for the site. Um, the, um, uh, let me get my notes for a second. Anyhow, um, I, I just would like to see more of a, more of a presence. Right now, you've got a low-profile building that, um, I'm not saying is unattractive. We just want, you know, we're, we're stepping up our game on Evergreen Road. We are, we're trying to make it a destination point. We don't have a downtown, we've been an automobile town, uh, our town developed around the cars, and we're trying to develop the space that people want today, that's walkable, that's a destination point, that has a sense of place. And, um, you're contributing to that. So, um, I would, you know, I would just love to, to see you take, take these things into consideration as we go about, um, creating something totally different on Evergreen Road. Um, and, and I don't, I don't wanna exclude other council people from speaking, but, um, I do wanna make a, a motion of, at some point, that we postpone the site plan and give you time to absorb some of the feedback tonight, um, and to come back to us with some revisions. Um, so I'm not gonna make that now, but, uh, I will make that motion.
Ms. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Crowe, could you, um, take that down again?
Um, I, I'm a member of the site plan committee, and of course, I was at the meeting, um, as was Mr. Pecati and, uh, Mr. Lance, who's not with us this evening. But the thing that struck me, I love what you're trying to do, but what struck me, and I have to agree with Mr. Seibert, that it didn't have an identity. It was so bland. And I think it needs to have, be more distinctive and have a sense of presence. Um, you're not the architect, the architect's all in there, but hi. Um, I know Rodgway, believe it or not, I know the firm from a long time ago. Um, I think we want it just to have something distinctive, something that stands out, because we're building a beautiful, beautiful road. We're building an extraordinarily beautiful road with the roundabouts, and what we're doing to Evergreen is going to change everything in this, in this area. So that building needs to have, I don't wanna say it's sad, but it's gotta have something distinctive. It's gotta have something memorable, and not just be a bland, bland, you know? And I don't want it to look like Taco Bell. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? It needs to have a sense of presence. So I agree totally with Mr. Seibert, um, as to what we would like to see there. That's, we, we're, we're still gonna try to deal with all the issues that the residents have, but in terms of the appearance, it's got to be something that people, it, that draws them in. So that's, that's all I'm gonna say to you. You can do better.
I just have a comment. Uh, Cherry, you know, the whole, um, discussion that we've had, trying to get now, was ninety-two days of approvals. Uh, not that we wanted to run over anything and grant anything that is not good for the city or its residents or, or its businesses, but, but somehow, when we come to something that is, is, um, I don't know how, how to even define it, but something that's unique and, and, uh, change, a change, a major change in what is occurring on this property, that maybe we should just, instead of having just a site plan committee, we should have, it had to be the whole, so that everybody can give input at the same time, so we can keep these things on track to get these things done. Um, yeah, to the residents, uh, just to add one comment, I know the mayor mentioned it, and her state of the city, it's a loft that is residential, and, uh, it's a percentage filled, it's almost eighty, eighty percent filled with residents, and it's right in the midst of, it's on Central Park Boulevard, right in the midst, and they're gonna have commercial on north of it, commercial south of it. Um, and the other thing that, um, that I, I personally, um, you know, I, I appreciate art, I appreciate architecture, uh, I just, um, find myself a little drawn from telling anybody if a design is okay or not okay. And it's not to, to, uh, you know, take away from what Mr. Seibert said, but I just think that, you know, if every architect, uh, came in here and we told him how to build and how to design things, uh, we wouldn't have any, uh, any great designers and architects, because, you know, sometimes, uh, God is out on him and is really doing something that is visionary and something that is attractive to him. I think my job is to lay out the site itself and, and zone it so it can be developed. And, uh, that's just my personal opinion. I just think that design, we can criticize it, but, you know, at one point, we say, if you have to do it the way I want it, as opposed to the way that owner and the developer want it. I, I thought that this complimented, uh, Travelers Hall or Century Note to that effect, uh, because of the materials that they were using in the site plan. But that goes back to making sure that the council person's on the same page. And, and my suggestion is we'll get something like this, uh, and to expedite these requests that we, we'll just create a hall, we can have a special committee hall and, and take these things up.
Through the chair, similar to what we did with Lawrence Tech and the bank with facility.
Right, right.
We just didn't anticipate that, um, these issues would be with this project.
We didn't have residents coming to.
Yeah, we didn't anticipate.
There was no way of knowing. But Mr. Seibert, are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, I, uh, we move to postpone, uh, site plan, uh, thirteen oh nine.
Order. Uh, can we have that, Mr. Fraser?
Yes, uh, are you gonna do it for a date?
Certainly. I need the attorney and maybe Mr. Crowe's input on, on dates.
Through the chair, you could always set it for the next regular council meeting. If it wasn't ready or there were some other issues, it could be put back on the table and postponed again.
I'm not trying to delay, I, I don't wanna delay, uh, forever. But whatever's reasonable for the architect and Time Equities, um, but, uh, so I would move that we, uh, to a date certain, which would be the next regular council meeting, and with the possibility of, if you're not ready, we would postpone again to the, the meeting when you are ready.
If I could just, I, I think that might be appropriate. Um, since the ODD was introduced, it would be enacted on April twenty eighth. If the applicant and the architect can get revisions, we could bring it back to the April eighth committee of the whole for comfort level before you act on it on the twenty eighth. Otherwise, if they're not ready at that time, then we can always postpone it one additional.
That work, Mr. Seibert?
That works for me.
Hopefully, either way.
Okay, go with it, Mr. Seibert.
Okay.
And we could always have a special meeting just to, to talk about, this is one, one item agenda.
Absolutely.
Petition here and there.
Yeah.
Okay, and was there a support with Mr. Fraser?
I support it.
Oh, you did? Let's move on, Mr. Seibert's support, by, um, Ms. Seymour, that this be, uh, tabled until, uh, the twenty eighth of April, is that correct? Twenty eighth of April, and that, uh, before that, uh, that meeting, that we will sit down in a committee hall and, and give input, see how it's turned out.
Uh, I just, one other thing.
Wait, Mr. Seibert?
I'm also wondering, I knew there was one other thing I wanted to bring up. Um, the parking in the front of the building, I'm wondering if, uh, and you may have reasons for this, uh, I'm just wondering if the building could be one row of parking removed, and the building move a little closer to the street, if that's what we're trying to do, if that's more of an Evergreen Road presence. By moving it closer to the street, you're moving it farther away from Evergreen Meadows. Um, and you're just flipping parking around on the site. And you're just flipping parking around on the site. I don't know if that's possible, but that's another suggestion I would make.
Could you grant, yes, of course.
No, we certainly, we certainly were interested in getting that building as close to the street as possible. Terry worked with us to actually retake a portion of the, if you picture the site as it exists, it's an perilous substantial landscape, um, that separates the Evergreen Road from the property and we're blinding that and taking it down and creating a sidewalk, a pedestrian sidewalk to transition from our property and certainly moving the building.
And making, there, we took a target.
Right. The parking lot would be physically closer to Evergreen Road than it is now by a substantial margin. And we probably would have been interested in moving it closer as, you know, that is the trend and the dynamic, but on advice from potential tenants for the buildings as well as our retail broker, they felt that wouldn't be as viable of an option for retailers if there weren't two full rows of parking in front of the building. It's just unfortunately, in this market, it's built the same.
I understand that. I just thought.
I just, Mr. Seibert made a comparison to the villages, the shots at the village on the street. That has almost two bays, two double rows of parking. So we did work with the developer, originally they had three rows plus the drive lanes to get it closer and reduce the greenway by having other aesthetics like ornamental fencing and so forth. So we did make the conscious effort to move it as close as viable and still meet their tenant requirements of having a sufficient number of parking, at least visibly, in the front. But these are all issues we can address and bring back to the next conference.
Yes, of course, Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, I just want to say this, it's, as you're taking a look at this project, for me, the skyline of Southfield and the area where you're building this building, we're very protective of that skyline because it's unique and it really is the skyline for Humboldt County, not just for the city of Southfield. And so whatever goes into that area, keep that in mind, that it shouldn't complement our skyline, even though it's a shorter building. And I don't expect you to, you know, add another tall building to make our skyline even better, but it should be in harmony with that. So, and those are the things that I see in the design of the building, so just wanted to say that.
And if I'm really, Madam Clerk?
No.
All in favor, seeking public singing, aye?
Aye.
Names? Motion to adjourn. The next item that we have is GP 1265, Special Use Request of Mary Claire McCormick. Mr. Crowe?
Thank you. Our final public hearing also has an associated site plan. We could take those together. Special use and site plan review of Mary Claire McCormick, CM Partners Architects LLC on behalf of the owner, St. Thomas Cyro Malabar Catholic Church to construct a 3,431 row square foot addition to the existing St. Thomas Church on property located at 17235 Mount Vernon on the southwest corner of Mount Vernon and Rutland Drive. Have a brief video presentation before I ask the architect and applicant to speak. Especially used Site Planner Review Request of Mary Claire McCormick, CM Partners Architects LLC on behalf of the owner, St. Thomas Cyro Malabar Catholic Church to construct a 3,431 row square foot addition to the existing church on property located at 17235 Mount Vernon. Property is located on the southwest corner of Mount Vernon and Rutland Drive, Subpo 2425, 326001, Section 25 of the city of Southfield. Subject property is owned by our three single-family residential and other properties to the northwest, south, and east. With regard to the existing land use, the subject property is developed with the St. Thomas Cyro Malabar Catholic Church in rectory. Properties to the northwest, south, and east are developed single-family homes currently on Mount Vernon, Louise, and Rust. Site contains 6.51 acres of land with 480 feet of frontage on Mount Vernon and a depth of 591 feet. The Special Use and Site Planner Review Request is to construct a 3,431 row square foot addition to the existing church on property located at 17235 Mount Vernon. Parking required for the site is 154 spaces with 156 provided on site. An elevation indicates the use of brick for the new additions to match the existing brick as well as stone and glass. The issues considered by the planning department during the review of the Special Use and Site Plan War, Special Use and Site Planner Review Standards of Results Order. Petitioners, implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security and the proposal that aligns with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting moderate density, single-family for this person. Through the chair. Mr. Crowe? There's an existing photo of the existing church, which is pretty much a one-story, similar to a Catholic school building that was done in the 50s. And what the proposal is really to make the church look more like a church. And it has substantial architectural elements, which Ms. McCormick can get into. They're not expanding the parking, they're not expanding any additional curb cuts, there's no additional seating space, it's to make the front vestibule more pedestrian, member-friendly as you come in, and extend briefly to the exterior for a stage and some storage. There is one item after the presentation, the public hearing, that we need to discuss, the required screening wall, but other than that, we're in favor of this project.
Okay. Petitioner, please, give the address for the record, please.
Mary Claire McCormick, 28 West Avenue, Suite 1400 Detroit, 48226.
Sure.
Thank you. I am here from CM Partners Architects representing our clients from St. Thomas Cyro Malabar Church. I'd like to introduce the pastor, Father George, and the building chair, Mr. Shirakel. We've been working with the congregation in St. Thomas in regards to creating a more of a religious vernacular to the front of the building. The building actually, as Mr. Crowe indicated, was, it's a 1950s, very bland, one-story building that really doesn't signify or say church, as well, the building does not have some of the public spaces that the congregants need today, which includes a gathering area in the rear, in the entrance, as well as an adoration chapel that would be separate from the sanctuary area of the church. Additionally, there's a multipurpose room that's attached to the church and they, the congregants wanted a raised platform area for presentations as well as some storage area for tables and chairs. So that constitutes the 3,400 square foot addition to the church. What we did to the front of the church to give it the presence really and the height and the vernacular that the congregants were looking for, is we're actually employing some stained glass, as well, we raised the roof lines, we raised the roof lines in the north decks of the church, in the gathering area, as well, we instituted a bell tower to get that vernacular. The bell will not be an active bell. And likewise, we added a cross from St. Thomas, which is part of the specific vernacular of this Catholic parish. The former building use was actually the former St. Beatrice Church, which is also a Roman Catholic church. And the congregants at St. Thomas Cyro Malabar have, are newcomers to the community, they purchased approximately, I believe, a year ago. And we did make a presentation to the Neighborhood Association. They had expressed interest and some concerns at the planning site or council committee. And so we did go over, I think just last Thursday, and reviewed the project with them and likewise, Father George will be joining that group, so happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I'll open a public hearing, if anyone wishes to speak. Would you please give your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Southfield City Council, and to the executive members of Southfield, which are doing the fine job. My name is Charlie Giddyam, precinct delegate over a decade and a half. My address is on Pure, I can be located in Pure Box 2443, Southfield, Michigan, 4 East, 48037. I am totally in favor of this. If Father John, if Father John, I'll keep your name right. If Father John, if Father George wants to extend his building taller in the front and in the back, he got my blessings. The neighborhood that he's, that he's in, now we got a, we got a Catholic church here, you know, and that neighborhood that he's in is one of the most salted neighborhoods, not only in Southfield, but in the tight state of Michigan that I feel. You won't find a, from Rutland back to Bonfire Hill or into Merle Drive, there's slightly under 200 residential homes. You won't find that one home sitting there empty alone before somebody wants to get up in there. You know, because of the church here, there's this, the little guy, the janitor's here, he's sitting on that truck to cut that grass, you won't see a dead man in it. It has curb appeal in that zone. You won't, that neighborhood, you won't see a body, a homicide there, not nowhere, nowhere on that, on that section, when it went to church. As a matter of fact, some of the middlest, some of the shit, shit behind us here, they had a process up in here because of how safe it is. As a matter of fact, I bought one and that house is up the code. And I've been there 15 years and just, the house that bought my, the one that bought my house up, that guy, that, that, that ministry, that house is up. And I don't play the music.
You're in favor of this?
Yes, I am.
I'm in hotel.
Now, because of the Catholic church sitting there, you won't find a check and go place nowhere alone in there. You won't find a liquor store nowhere where the young men standing up 30 or 4 hours outside the door following people, and the following back out to the car. I, I police the problem sometimes, the people that are 25, they are, they controlled right there by, by the church, you know, make sure that our kids get across the street safe. And when the lifelong criminals, they sit there, it's not, you go on vacation, you're out there sitting there when you come back.
I hear you, but I gotta hold you to five minutes.
Okay. Well, we're seeing this, the father here, it's been here a couple of years, and it's supposed to have been here a couple of years, but it's been here seven years. Only problem I had was they, these guys, they don't want to go to this church. They had a person, they had a helicopter, like the person at space, and one time come, land, and take their members up and down, a big one too. And the way that, when the spirits around, I was so afraid that, you know, the blade's going to, you know, kill them, go into the crowd to kill them there. But since they are standing in there, I know the Father, Father George here, they have a name there. And so they got my blessings. So I appreciate each one of the councils to give a blessing, because that's one of the best things around, because it's church to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I enjoyed, I really enjoyed your energy there. Anyway, anyone else who's going to speak?
My address is Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. This council's legal notice for this public hearing, GP 1265, is improperly written because said notice fails to describe the nature of this request as required by state law. Public Act 110 of 2006 states, and I quote, "describe the nature of the request," unquote. This council states only that this is a special use request and fails to state the nature of this request. That is, what type of special use are we talking about here tonight? There are 13 different types of special uses. This council fails to specify which one of the 13. That is, what is the nature of this request? This council's notice must be considered improperly written since it doesn't describe the nature of this request, a criterion mandated by state law. Now, I happen to know personally which one of the 13 special uses we're talking about here tonight, only because I happen to live in the same subdivision as the petitioner for the last 46 years. Yes, despite Councilwoman Jordan's malicious lies and her false documentations stating otherwise, I am a Southfield resident and Pastor Jordan is a Southfield liar. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Anyone else who's going to speak?
Pamela Dero, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 24835, I'm sorry, 2483460439. Skipping you my other number. Mr. Percotti, I just want to say, before I get started, anytime my presence before this podium diminishes your significance, you've given me the power. And I don't even want your power, okay? This public hearing and this request, they did pretty much answer my question, and I would like to say to Father George and Mr. Shirakel, I'm staying. I am concerned about what the addition would be used for. I'm concerned about the fact that out of the 13 special use requests, it didn't document or say specifically. When you write out a notice, I think it would be a good idea to put that on there just so that it could be documented and you could avoid the debacle that you had with the previous public hearing. And as the residents stated for the previous hearing, when you send out these notices and when you say things are going to be used for a special request, it should always be included in every type of legal document what it's going to be used for. So my concern is what will this addition be used for? I want it to be documented more specifically. I want to make sure that in no way, shape, form, or fashion, unless it is documented, that it will be used as a banquet or any type of facility with food or serving food unless it's stated on this particular special use request. And other than that, I've driven by the area. I think they do keep it clean. I can't say anything bad, but I want you to explore the option of a brick wall, a concrete post, a panel wall, that would have beautiful landscaping. And Mr. Crowe, when you and I talked about the decorative fence in the back of Tale 12 Mall, we talked about the fact that the city was going to redefine what a decorative fence is. Now, all of these situations coming up with these businesses and places that have this decorative wooden fence that you can blow down, like, you know, the Wolf and the Three Little Pigs, I think by now, you should raise the bar and raise the standard. Every business developer should get rid of that crappy wooden decorative fence that can fall down with the wind blowing. And they should be required to put up a concrete post and panel wall, something that the city can be proud of, that would do what the mayor said, go along with the Southfield standard. It's easily maintained, and they should be required to do some kind of landscaping. In the back of Tale 12- In the back of tail twelve mall, after that place had been open for five or six years, they hadn't even planted the sixteen trees that was a part of the requirement. But I caught it because my eyes are on Southfield. So let's do that, let's establish some kind of standard with removing the decorative fence, raising the bar, and doing a concrete post and panel wall is cheaper to maintain than brick.
Anyone else who's going to speak now, Mr. President?
My name is Geraldine Amato. Uh, with reference to the architects, I'm thinking of the Masonic grand architect versus the creator of all creation. And, and just like the incorporated city governments, the incorporated church is allowed to work only within certain parameters and building buildings or adding to them is one of the privileges granted by the absentee overlords to those such corporations. Yet what is needed today is something grander that is initiated by the spirit of the people involved in the church. All religious organizations today in this country are so-called state-controlled, meaning they're government-controlled by regulation, even though there are individuals within each, whatever the religious association may be, that are true to their god that they worship, their creator. There are many who are merely mercenaries. And unless there is an uprising of folks, good people in this nation that are willing to press against the established agenda and set a new course, we are doomed for totalitarian destruction. We will be deprived of our property and our buildings and all these buildings are built with loans. You get a grant or a loan or whatever it is, you're, the, the monetary system today is a credit instrument because we have been conquered by those who control the wealth of the world. And we have the illusion of ownership, the illusion of development and improving things when in fact we're on the brink of disaster. And as a Christian and as a Catholic of background, I would like to challenge individuals to seek the counsel of the Holy Spirit and how they invest resources and time. Now, for example, uh, this United States, uh, U C C, Uniform Commercial Code under which we operate, both religious organizations and so-called government organizations, those codes only allow, I lost my train of thought here, but the code is restrictive. So if you were, for example, wanting to invest your resources and service to other folks or people that need his help, you would be so swamped of regulations and controls and you can't do this, you can't do that, you have to do it this way or that way, that you would be so overwhelmed, you decided safer and easier to just build a building and have a few ceremonies in it. What we need here in this area is housing for people that have nothing left, all their resources have been separated from them, they have nothing in possession but a few rags on their backs and they're, they're totally, um, dependent on people bringing them in from the cold when it's too cold outdoors to survive or giving them a meal, uh, on a day that they eat. If the churches in this area try to get involved with something like that, the government agencies will come down on them with both feet and try to prevent them. And one preacher I heard a while back, he said, the reason why the Christian church in the United States of America is not persecuted is because it has not taken a stand for the Lord Jesus Christ. And I have to say amen to that one. In fact, none of the religious organizations are allowed to. If they get stepped out of line, the leadership is removed and some other leader is put into play. I know this from experience and I observed it. I observed the organized church being involved with organized crime in the courts and it's happening here as I perceive the time I've been spending here and reviewing things. So the challenge is, are we going to continue to go along with the parameters of a coterie of malabellin scoundrels that now control our lives or are we going to resist their control? We cannot afford to continue to be mercenaries for a malabellin establishment, no matter what institution, whether public label or private label or religious label or, um, nonreligious, they're all controlled by the same folks.
Ms. Martin, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Let's hear the public hearing closed.
Mr. President. Through the chair.
Mr. Morris.
I just, um, there's one point that we need to spend a couple of minutes visiting. Um, in history, the previous planning commission had recommended against the wall, the site is a large site and at that time several evergreens were planted and they are growing up and being matured. Um, so the, the three sides that are bordering the roads already have an evergreen screen and they're not required to have a wall. However, the, there is a, a special land use provision saying that a wall may be required adjacent to residential, but the council has the right to waive that requirement in lieu of landscaping or other type of fencing. In this particular case, this was discussed at several workshops, we had two residents show up, the, um, representatives did meet with the neighborhood association and, and the recommendation was that there is a substantial landscape screen along that, that buffer and that would, that would be comfortable than tearing that down to construct a wall. No one wanted to create a compound, but that's something that you could, as part of your recommendation, waive the wall requirements in lieu of either existing landscaping, additional landscaping, or some other means. I just wanted to make sure that that is discussed before you take any action tonight.
Thank you very much, Council.
Yep, Mr. President.
Goodness, you're awesome.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with, uh, Mr. Crowe's explanation and satisfied with the maturing of the evergreen trees being that buffer. Um, I do want to speak, uh, about the design, I can't speak as passionately as my friend Charlie Gilliam, uh, but I'll try. Uh, this, I actually know this, uh, this property really well. This is across, uh, the street from where my grandparents lived on Pennsylvania in Rockland, so I passed this property, uh, just about every day growing up. But this is a drastic improvement, uh, to the building that's there now. Um, and, and it looks great and I think it, it will be an added benefit to the neighborhood. I did have a question, uh, for our city planner. We have the letter here and, and I think this is satisfied, but the traffic engineering department had some concerns, uh, about, uh, the access driveways. Have those all been remedied?
Um, I'll, I'll let the architect speak to it, but the, the one access driveway to the east is just for the rectory itself.
Okay.
The one to the south is really more of a pedestrian path from the neighborhood and the only ingress ingress is on Mount Vernon and there are no changes proposed to that. So I think that was an initial comment by the traffic engineer because we didn't have an understanding of how those functioned.
Okay.
And we're satisfied with, with, and I'll, I'll ask Ms. McCormick if you have anything that I missed.
I know, our, our parking requirements are the same and we're keeping all three curb cuts into the parking lot and exiting the parking lot off Mount Vernon.
Okay, that's good to know. Uh, I will be in support of this project. I think it's an added benefit to the community, um, an added benefit to the neighborhood as Mr. Gilliam eloquently stated and it seems like, uh, this is, this deserves merit for approval.
And, and, Mr. Morris, thank you. Uh, Mr. Seiber.
Yeah, I'd like to move G P twelve sixty-five, a special use request of Mary Michael McCormick, CM Partners and Architect on behalf of Saint Thomas Cathedral, Mall of Honor, Catholic Church.
Is there support?
Support.
That's moved by Mr. Seiber, um, it's almost a title goes, but it's Mr. Frazier.
Give it to Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Frazier's supported by Mr. Frazier, all the papers signify.
Mr. President, before, before you vote.
Hey, go ahead.
I have a, I have a question because I know that there was a church on Evergreen Road and there was a lot of discussion and they were required to invest in a very large expenditure to construct the brick wall. It was a very expensive brick wall and the church had to bear that burden. I want to make sure we're consistent, so I know that the residents wanted that brick wall. So is, the difference in this case is that you're saying the residents do not want it? Because I want to make sure that we're fair and we're consistent in the requirement of these walls.
Through the chair, we, we did, we did investigate other similar type of situations in that one particular church. There was a major expansion of the building and there was a lot of comment discussion. That building was surrounded by residents on, I believe, two sides. This has, um, a road around three sides and this issue about the wall had, had come up many years ago, that's why the landscaping was present. So working with the city attorney, we determined that the only required wall would be on the west property line and that it would be profitable based on comments at the workshops and the commission, that since the landscape was mature, that would be preferred than creating a compound with the wall. And the council does have that prerogative to make that as a condition. So we, we believe that we are consistent. Each case is unique, there's different comments and reasons why walls should be put or not, but part of the special land use does give the prerogative to the council as opposed to a waiver, um, regard, regarding whether a wall or not.
And that would go in the second motion, right, the site plan?
Yeah, go in the site plan motion.
Yeah.
It, it could, it is a special land use issue.
Okay.
So that, that could be translated to the site plan.
Yeah, so you want that tied to be?
I, I would, I would, I think it's appropriate to make that as a condition of your special land use that then would get transferred over to the site plan.
I'd like to see. And Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, um, I know it goes with the site plan, but as long as we're discussing this, I want a clarification. Are you saying that the council has the authority to either require a wall or can waive the wall in either direction?
In, in our recommended resolution, as we wrote in, uh, a screen wall is required along the west property line, however, the city council may allow landscaping or other screening in lieu of the wall and that is part of the special land use condition dealing with religious institutions adjacent to residential.
The reason I bring that up, there was another situation where a church was going to be built, I am very familiar with that, that the residents wanted the wall and therefore the council insisted that a wall be built. Now, you're saying that, you're saying that the council has the...
That's the consistent, with the council can require a wall.
But you're also saying that they can also waive it.
That's right.
Even if the residents want it?
Well, that's your...
If that's, I think that speaks to the consistency and we need, we need to be clear about that.
Well, I'll, again, I'll defer to the city attorney, but in each case is unique and the council has the prerogative to either require that the wall's there or waive it in lieu of landscaping or other type of screening.
That wasn't the...
The city center drive, that wasn't required?
Yep, that was, that was not the option, you know, at all. The residents wanted the wall and the council says, that's through.
Again, I don't know the particulars of that case, but we did, we did, we did, it was pre by time, but however, we did spend some time with the city attorney looking at this to make sure that we require in this particular case which, which your conditions could be.
So I need to, um, make a friendly amendment then to my motion to approve the special use request before you approve.
Yeah.
Correct?
Right.
Um, and that would be that we would waive the, the wall in this case.
And we didn't waive it, we waived it and, um...
Yeah. I don't care.
I mean, that's moved by Mr. Seiber, supported by Mr. Frazier and does include the, the waiving of the wall versus putting up this, uh, the, um, screening of the, the vegetation. Um, all papers, statement by my saying aye?
Aye.
Ayes, motion carries. Mr. Seiber, you want to take the...
Mr. President, I, I need to understand, we're waiving the wall because of the request of the church or the community?
I didn't hear...
Why are we waiving?
I didn't hear anybody talking about that under the public hearing.
I did. So why, why is the request being made?
Again, through, through the chair.
According to the resolution, we...
We had several workshops and a public hearing, there was a lot of discussion about the existing landscaping and that, um, that that was more appropriate than having that removed to install a wall. And then tonight, the wall issue did not come up. It is a request of the applicant to not, to install the wall, but it also was a recommendation of the planning commission, the current planning commission and a previous planning commission on this site.
You should not have the wall.
Not have a wall.
Mayor, I remember that case and, and, uh, those people turned out in droves on that one.
I remember it.
In Winchester and all over the place and, and, uh, I, I was, I thought that the vegetation could be put in and set up wall because neighbors, especially those on Winchester, were really forcing the wall. So I think here you have an option which makes it a little different in that the neighbors here don't feel the same way as the neighbors there on Evergreen Road.
That's, that's the point I'm trying to make there is the request...
But there's a choice, if there wasn't a choice, I'd say you have to be consistent and put walls everywhere.
I agree.
But right here, there is a waiver stipulation that council has and since there's no objection to that.
There's, there's also, um, sixteen seventeen parking spaces between the building itself and the property line. There's a lot of lawn, uh, and as Mr. Prost said, every case is, uh, is different, so I'm, I'm very comfortable waiving the wall in this particular case. I think, uh, the wall would actually be a detriment, uh, to what's, what's existing there. To remove the, the vegetation for a wall, uh, doesn't make a mess to me in this case.
I, if I can, please, if I can make my point, I want to make sure that there was a decision by the community not to have the wall because the decision to create the wall was made by the resident and I do not want the city to waive that responsibility because that is a huge cost to churches. And I know that that decision has been, been made on numerous occasions and I understand, you're right, uh, Mr. President, that we did have the community coming out demanding that and I do not want the city to say, in this case, we would recommend you don't do a wall, it should be driven by the community. And that's my point, I want that consistency.
And if I could...
Go ahead, Chair.
Under five point three seven wall substitution, wherever in this chapter an unpierced masonry wall is required, a buffer strip of not less than ten feet in width or fence or wall may be permitted in lieu of the required unpierced masonry wall upon finding by the city council that the buffer strip or fence or wall would provide equal or greater protection to the residential district from any adverse effects for the use of the non-residential district. So that's the, uh, the part that gives you the ability to, to substitute or waive the wall. And in this case, we have mature landscaping that's been planted some time ago as the buffer.
Frankly, in, in this, excuse, in, in this situation, I don't know why the wall people paying up. All we're going to do is continue to not have a wall there. It's not like, uh...
But, but again, every time we have a change, we have to look at what's on the books today. I can't say what was on the books in nineteen fifties or when the last edition was done, but that's, sometimes amendments are made to the ordinance and we have to look at what's currently on the books. So that's why we felt that we needed to bring that issue up.
And we've already approved it.
I, I do want to say that the, the improvement to the building is very, very attractive and I would think that, that the congregation and the neighborhood, as, as has been stated, would appreciate the investment and the improvement in the church. Um, there was, again, the question, is this going to be used as a general assembly area or is this a sanctuary that's being expanded?
Oh, actually, there is a, um, an existing church in the other half of the building constitutes a multipurpose hall. They won't be used at the same time. There would be mass of the church followed by, um, activity in the multipurpose.
But the sanctuary is being expanded.
Sanctuary itself is not being expanded, just the, the, the entrance into the building is being expanded.
Okay. Right? Uh, Mr. Seiber, you want to be...
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't have any ordinance for, for the special use, no, no. For the special use, no. No, it's, then we go to be...
All right, can I have a approval of the site plan, SP 1310?
It's for...
That's a move by Mr. Cyrus, supported by Mr. Fraser. All in favor, signify as a aye.
Aye.
Ayes, motion carries. Let me just hear that. We're now moving into the communications section of our agenda. Please let me remind everyone that on March 3rd of 2014, the city council amended Rule 5 of the council rules of procedures. The amendment provides that the person wishing to address city council is now limited to three minutes, unless the time is extended by the presenting officer. We'll start with Mr. Michael Lindman, please. Michael?
I'm here.
Next is Pamela Gerald. Call your name.
Okay. My name is Pamela Gerald. Your line, 155 Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. For the residents that need to contact me, I can be reached at 248-346-0439. Several years ago, in fact, it was January of 2012, the U.S. Department of Justice found Denso and their parent company, Yazaki Corporation, guilty of price fixing and bid rating on the auto industry and appropriately assessed fine at $750 million, or three quarters of a billion dollars. On October the 22nd, 2012, this city gave Denso another tax abatement. Denso has rode the gravy train in Southfield for almost 20 years at the expense of the roads in Southfield and all of the service drives. At that time, I recommended to this council that they should declare the entire city a Public Act 198, which is establishing an industrial development district under that Act of 1974. And this would be done under the guise of shortening the council meetings and the public hearings. As a best practice, I want you guys to know that I approve of the citywide Public Act 198. Don't give me any credit for it, but I would just like to thank you guys for listening and being a little bit more creative with your ideas and concepts and listening to your public. These ideas just might work. Mr. Moss, I also want to thank you for just being intellectually curious to ask about the number of jobs that were generated, whether or not they went through the John Gray Center youth Southfield residents. So, just go a little bit further, and I want you to find out how much money since the 1990s, when they started tax abatements in Southfield, has Southfield benefited with extra money generated? How many jobs were generated and maintained since the 90s? And are those companies still in business? And did we ever get our money back from Aerosmith? They got a tax abatement, and they filed bankruptcy, and they went out of business. So, finally, I just want to say, with all the purported benefits of tax abatements, I'm glad to see that we have great roads in Southfield, that the restaurants are opening up daily, jobs are plentiful, and we don't even have any foreclosed houses in Southfield. And I'd like to ask a question. No disrespect to any council member. Is that a fact, or is this considered my opinion? You decide.
Next is Jamie White. And Mr. Mullin? Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, Mr. Mullin, I see. This is White, turn forward. Come on forward.
I live at 19742 Melrose, Southfield, 48075-248-2007659. I first like to thank council and children for acknowledging my email. I was here seven years ago regarding promoting awareness to reflex symptomatic dystrophy, also known as complex regional pain syndrome. I am the originator of the Public Act 678, 2006, which I asked my state representative at that time, Virgil Smith. This is the signed copy from Governor Grant home in 2006, which is a public act. It is on the website, the state government. I have been asking citizens in the tri-county area of Detroit, Southfield, Ferneille, and et cetera, to write support letters to the appropriation team in Lansing, as well as the subcommittee, to appropriate funds for the workshop that is highly needed, to educate the medical field insurance company and the general public. What this will also do, it will let people know that people like myself that do live with chronic pain, it is not a mental problem, hurt some people in the medical field. It will also help children, so they won't be labeled. The children that are coming up, they are our future. I have been working or advocating pain for the last nine years. I have been advocating health issues for the last 50. The lack of education in the medical field needs to increase, because, maybe I said that wrong, but the lack of education in the medical field makes it a mental problem. I know how I feel, just like everybody in this room, you know when you're hurt. There's 90% in the medical field, the insurance company, and the general public that do not know the difference between acute, chronic, and reoccurring pain. I have asked some of the largest universities in the state of Michigan to write pamphlets or brochures, but instead, they prefer to go to Washington to make a name for themselves, which is important.
Your minutes, your minutes are up. I'll give you one more minute to finish up your thoughts.
I'm asking that Senator Conner's office be contacted. I'm also asking that Senator John Molaron's office be contacted and ask that they support funding for Public Act 678, 2006. Thank you.
I did speak to Representative Hobbs.
I'm sorry?
I did speak to Representative Hobbs after communication and forwarded, I haven't checked back with him, but I, I did follow, as I indicated that was...
Because I did receive an email today about a meeting on Wednesday. I need to follow up with that tomorrow. And if they do want me to come, I will be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Mr. Mullin?
My address is Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037, located in this city, in the city of Paco Hill, just one small block away from that mecca of a city, like the Yes, the grass is greener, much greener in Mecca. The roads are smoother, much smoother in Mecca. That heavenly oasis in the center of Paco Hill. Council will blame the state. Council will blame the county. And council will blame the bear behind the tree. Council will blame anyone else but themselves for Paco Hill. This is, again, just another example, another sorry example of your brain-dead council in action. Another sad tale in the consecutive saga of the Gang of Seven, the now famous Gang of Seven that just can't shoot straight. The gang that gave us, you and me, Paco Hill. The same gang that also gave us Denso with 21 years, yes, 21 years of continuous tax abatements. Tax monies that could have been used by this city to repair and repave the roads in Paco Hill. Remember this, the curse of corporate criminals at Denso, along with council. The next thing you get, a Paco in Paco Hill. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Mullin, you're up there. I just wanted to tell you and your friend there that I am absolutely insulted by those sweatshirts. Didn't clap all you want. I'm really offended that you can come here and speak your piece in a country that we have and make a statement that's often is hell. I don't know why you people come here and voice your objections to whatever you're selling, but, you know, I hope every Southfield receives that on television, lets you know how offended they are, because you're insulting every Southfield resident and business in this city, including me. And I really object to coming in wearing that sweatshirt in my, in my council, James. I brought him a fan. And you can come all day, because that's the rights you have in this country. I'm letting you know that I'm very offended. And to go on television and show off that Southfield is hell is beyond my belief that you can come here and make these kinds of statements and show those sweatshirts. We know there's potholes. Every city's got potholes, even in Georgia, the Southern Gulf, they have potholes. So, we all know it, and we're breaking our blood to make sure that we get it done. We had not even on our agenda this evening to buy more, more materials to fill some more holes. Anyways, I'm going out to the next person. Mr. Adams, please. John Adams.
I'm here.
Ms. Mullin.
Geraldine Almato here. I don't think you should get upset about people expressing their views like that. It's, I think it should be tolerable.
It is tolerable, Ms. Mullin. The business up in the city I was raised in.
Yeah.
I've been here 47 years, protecting the people in the city, the businesses, residents. I'm really affirmed by anybody that comes here, is that Southfield is hell, because you don't have to stand here and make that kind of statement in these chambers. You go outside, take it if you want, and stand up a lot in the internet, but don't come in the chambers wearing those wets. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Geraldine Almato. Since you're modifying public comment, perhaps you should put them at the beginning of the meeting. It seems like the length of the meeting sometimes causes stress to people who have physical problems, et cetera, and, and they could leave instead of sitting through an entire meeting, they have some comments to make at the beginning, so you might want to consider that. I'm sorry you find public comments too tedious to listen to, five minutes of each of thereof. However, I want to reassert my contention that this nation is in the throes of decadence, and unless the good people who are willing to engage their own minds in freedom realize where we're headed and make some different acts of conscience, we are headed towards a disaster here, physically, economically, socially, whatever. There's been a grand feat of social engineering that has created a situation where we have tenuous bonds with one another, very fragile community, if there is any at all in some areas. And we're brought up from day one for a major association or relationship with the master. We have been reduced to being subjects of those who control this country. We are not free agents anymore. If we're happy to be mercenaries, we're paving the way to be absolute slaves, or if we're not useful as slaves, to be just taken care of and out of the way. The closest I ever came to community in my life in this social order was during the early 90s, and I think you have something similar happening here. In New Mexico, we had the militia movement. That group was hounded and persecuted and driven, dispersed and driven underground, if it still exists anywhere. But those people, to me, of all the groups that I associated with over time, had the strongest perception of what we're up against. But since we no longer have a free press or free media, it's a controlled press and media. It's manipulations, deception, distractions, corruption's media. And the masterminds and the overlords who control that, control our thought processes, part of the propaganda machine of the school curriculums. And now they want to take our children and put them in free, free preschool, so that the parents have less and less influence on their own offspring. And we remember the stories from Nazi Germany and elsewhere, where children would turn in their parents for criticizing the state. Mentally and emotionally, we're not too far from that status. I urge people to think in terms of where we really are and to review genuine history, particularly in the revolutionary era. In public school, I was, the only thing I was told about the revolutionary era was that Patrick Henry said, "Give me liberty or give me death." I didn't know what that meant. It was only recently that I read the speech that that clause, that that framed ended.
The three minutes are up.
It was a call to arms. And Patrick Henry, just like Harriet Tubman, essentially said, "I would rather fight my liberty even to the death than to live as a slave or to live as a subject of someone I don't even like."
Thank you. The three minutes are up, dear.
Any questions?
No.
What do you think about the Declaration of Independence?
We don't have any other questions. We have the next, Mr. Yellen, the favorite speaker here.
Good evening. I'm Charlie, precinct delegate 20. This big jag city above us, Southfield, because we sit in the walk of law. About two or three weeks ago, one of the residents was getting convicted, and they clicked the house out, and then they got to the garage and then found her, they found her in the car, sitting there looking like a mummy that'd been there about seven years. And the way we're getting technology now, the council has, I think, quite a large sum of money into the pay, the utility bills, the telephone bill, and the pay, the mortgage until the money ran out. And then, you know, after, you know, taxation came, they, they convicted her, but it took seven years before they found her in the garage. Whereas Southfield, they'll never have to get red here, like the community there, they have their school over eight inches, someone, they come, come and say, they go knock it down. You let that mail fall at that, at that box for seven years, the mailman is going to say something in Southfield. You let your hair just grow. Don't cut that grass. But in other words, we look at, we look at, we look at, in Southfield, we look at, it's just like in, in the streets, we look at everybody. We don't, we don't, the blind fool back in the city, you see Mr. Yellen over there? The other day when the snow was out there, I saw my, my elderly, they might have shown the snow in there, and I went away, you know, wait till, you know, stop. But we look at, at each other. Now, about three or four years ago, that guy from South came up here and he fired a gun at, at, at a TV station over here. I stay on the other side of here. And I, I went to the police station, we have a new chief that's tired, but I filled out a complaint, but they said, when they found out what I wanted to do, I wanted to get a man ticket for a fire, a fire inside Southfield city limits, but they told me to go see lieutenant suicide. But I... But I never followed up on it. And I said, "I found out, let their graduate school around here, and let one of you, let one of you bust it out." We, in our neighborhood, we gonna knock that door if we don't see our neighbors after a year or two. They're the only one that have to get you fed alongside by one of these houses around here. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I hope you believe that Southfield is a hell. Counsel? Go ahead.
Last week, Councilman Moss, Fraser, and myself had the opportunity to attend a meeting with U.S. Senators Debbie Stabenow and Carl Levitt. And one of the items that came up in that meeting was the United States Postal Service. And I am interested in hearing from any resident in Southfield who is not getting, or getting irregular mail delivery. In my neighborhood, sometimes we go four days without a mail truck. Last week, two days. It's very irregular. I've talked to postal carriers and the postal union, and they tell me that the Southfield Post Office has been shorted staff, and they don't have enough people to man the clerk's windows or deliver mail in neighborhoods. And Senator Levitt asked me to forward that concern to his Detroit office, which I plan to do, but rather than just speak to my neighborhood and the adjacent boroughs next to my neighborhood, I've heard from people there as well, anybody that is experiencing the regular mail delivery in Southfield, I'd like to hear from. And you can email me at kcyber@cityofsouthfield.com, and I'll add your concerns to the list. The second thing that I wanted to speak about, and I'm sorry that so few people are here, but hopefully people at home will hear this. We belong to the Michigan Municipal League, and as councilpeople, we get the Review, which is the journal of the Michigan Municipal League. And in the latest issue, there is an article called "Great Revenue Sharing Heist." And I just thought that this is worth mentioning to the public, that this is one of the frustrations that we have as a council for the last decade regarding revenue sharing. The state has managed to pinch over six billion dollars in revenue sharing from local government over the last several years. And it comes primarily in the form of sales tax revenues. Sales tax revenues in the state went from six, in 2003, went from 6.6 billion to 7.72 billion. So the state received more sales tax revenue in the last decade. However, statutory, by law, the state is supposed to share this revenue with local communities. Nine hundred million has been shorted, and if you remember, I believe it was our last meeting, Chair of the Legislative Committee, Councilman Moss, recommended a resolution that we pass because the state has been touting a surplus. And there was a lot of talk, especially in the state senate, of giving people tax breaks, which would probably have amounted to about twenty dollars a person or something. But have your car land in a pothole, it costs three hundred dollars. We want to see that money spent on roads. The reason that the state has a surplus is because they've taken from local communities, and it's kind of like, I need to pay my bills, so I go to you and say, "You're gonna pay my bills," and then I turn around when you don't have enough money and say, "You know, you should have been better with how you manage your funds and for your budget." And that's what they're doing in municipalities. So, the article happened to mention Southfield in projected revenue taken from 2003 to 2014. It is twenty-one million, nine hundred thousand dollars. That is huge amount of money that was due statutorily. It's not just maybe would have happened, but it's statutorily due the community. And this is one of the things that, you know, on top of declining property values where we've lost revenue and had to deal with that, then we have the state taking money from us. Well, we're not delivering on those funds, and it has made our job exceedingly difficult. So I am, this bogus tax break that the state is offering, and then at the last minute now, they've thrown out 215 million dollars in a special budget amendment for roads. Do you know that 215 million, 215 million divided by eighty-three counties? What that means, it means about two million for Oakland County, of which there are twenty-eight, or I think thirty, some thirty-five, thirty-six municipalities. We'll be lucky if we see a hundred thousand dollars out of that. Most of the counties need the money for overtime on snow plowing and because they had to buy more salt. I don't know how many potholes are gonna get filled with this 215 million dollars. So, this is something, obviously, I am grieved about, and I just wanted this opportunity to share this with all of you because this is what we are facing, and it's not for lack of concern about Southfield roads, it's this systematic defunding of public schools and city governments that has been going on in Michigan for years. And then you have this, well, we have our house in order in Lansing, and it's because it's been laying a surplus because it's been on our backs. So, I'll get off my soapbox, but I did want to have the opportunity to share that with you.
Yes, I have a couple, three things I'd like to share with the people. First one is, I'd like to give a strong pat on the back, cheer, whatever positive thing I can say to our police and fire department. It's been, it was on the news that last Friday, there was a bank robbery at Comerica Bank at Telegraph in Ten Mile, and the police were called because the alarm company saw the, the alarm, the alarm went off, called our police. Our police showed up, the guy tried to escape and jumped in his car and tore down Burke Road. And coincidentally, it involved our fire department because it just so happened that our fire department was on the south end of Burke Road fighting a fire at the same time, and our dispatch people called the fire department and said, "Watch out, there's a guy, a bank robbery that the police are chasing down Burke Road, so watch out." And I talked to the fire chief, and he said that his people that were fighting the fire said it sounded like a NASCAR going by, because he was going by about a hundred miles an hour, but the police were right after him. And there was, there were some shots fired, but the bottom line, the good story is, our police arrested him. And he was, and he was a suspect in several other bank robberies in Detroit, and he also robbed a bank in another bank in Southfield about a week ago. So, a lot of times, people are saying, you know, our police are bad guys and all that, but it's a dangerous job, and our police are on the job, our fire department is on the job. The mayor, I was at the mayor's state of the city speech today, and she made a remark that the fire department has made about 12,000 runs in the past year. That's a thousand runs a month. A lot of those are medical runs, but the fire chief wanted me to pass on that there are some things that you need to watch out for. Fire hazards around your house. Make sure you inspect your house for fire hazards. And they don't want to make a run to your house. The house that they were fighting a fire in on Burke Road was a problem that apparently the gas had been turned off in the house, and the woman that lived there, the man that lived there, had electric heaters, they overheated and set the, and set the house on fire. And unfortunately, the person passed away from the fire. But I just think our police and fire departments are doing a great job, and we need to support them. Every time you see one, wave at them and say, "Hi, thank you for doing the job you're doing." The other thing I would like to bring up is, and it's been brought up more times than I care to hear about tonight, but I'm gonna bring it up one more time, and that's potholes and the roads. Tongue-in-cheek, people don't complain about taxes anymore. Now they're complaining about potholes. Every place I go, they recognize me and they talk about potholes. But one of the things I try to explain to people is, who owns the roads that run through the city of Southfield? And for the average resident, it really doesn't matter to them. As long as in the city of Southfield, they think we were responsible for it. So, I would like to have our city administrator just share with the people that are watching, that are gonna be on tape, that are gonna watch reruns of this program, about which roads are Southfield roads and which roads are not Southfield roads, so that people will understand. It doesn't make their car drive any better, I understand that. But at least they will understand who's responsible for which roads in the city of Southfield.
The city of Southfield has 246 miles of roads that we're responsible for. There are primarily three jurisdictions for the roads. The state of Michigan is responsible for Eight Mile, Telegraph, Southfield Road, 696, Northwestern Highway. Oakland County Road Commission is responsible for Ten Mile, Twelve Mile, Losser, and Greenfield and Inglewood. So the major mile roads, the city is responsible for Nine Mile, Eleven Mile, Evergreen, and Beach. The other residential streets, we are responsible for those as well. There are certain agreements that we have with, for example, Oakland County Road, that, you know, snow plowing. After they do the first run on Greenfield and Inglewood for snow removal, we augment that, but they are responsible for patching. We also have certain agreements that in order to preserve the life of the road, we receive money for sealing the seams and that in the roads, and that is done, and the city's not making a profit on that. We're in fact subsidizing when we do that, but as you said earlier, you know, to our residents around in Southfield.
I hope people will understand that we're doing the absolute best that we can in under torrent situations to try and make the roads as good as possible. And you heard earlier today that we're going to completely rebuild Evergreen Road, one that belongs to us that we're responsible for. And I think it was even said, good news, bad news. Good news is we're gonna completely rebuild Evergreen Road. Bad news is, it's gonna be blocked off, so you're gonna have a hard time getting around while we're making it better. But also, I think on our website, I think Michael Mannion put a post on our website of which roads are ours and which roads are someone else's, so you can look on our website and see that. Those are the things I want to say.
Mr. Moss?
Yeah, thank you. Councilman Cyver and Councilman Fraser took the words right out of my mouth, but not enough words because I'm asking to speak. I do want to mention that Councilman Cyver and Councilman Fraser and I just returned from the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, D.C. It's the opportunity for some fifteen hundred council members and mayors from across the country to meet, to convene in Washington at our state capitol, to not only share what's working in local communities around the country in this economic challenge, but also to lobby our federal officials on issues important to our local communities. It's kind of a one-year opportunity where we get to sit in their offices and talk about our most pressing local needs. One of the sessions that Councilman Fraser and I sat in on was about infrastructure investment, and I think you can tell that there's a theme going here with our council comments. One of the staggering statistics that was presented in this session is that we talk about our roads, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes, but our water systems and our pipes underground are aging to the point where there was a big boom after World War II in investing in these water pipes and sewer pipes from the 50s to the 80s. And so by 2030, there is going to be a need for one trillion dollars in investment around the country for our water pipes and sewers around the country. It's just a staggering figure. And that's something on a federal level, I hope people are in tune with, that affects our most local communities. They showed a picture of a community that had a water pipe, a water main break. It looked like a river had overflowed, but there was no river in the vicinity. And as our infrastructure ages, it only amplifies the message that cities need to fan together and make sure that we're lobbying our federal officials to really invest in our infrastructure, especially with Governor Snyder and Lansing officials touting around this nearly billion-dollar surplus. Now's the time to invest because we're gonna have a trillion-dollar national problem in about twenty more years. To put it in even further perspective, the state of Michigan just announced that they will be investing a hundred million dollars to help local and state road agencies to fill potholes, and another 115 million dollars for infrastructure construction projects. So that's 215 million dollars for roads during this unprecedented snowy season where our roads are basically now at their breaking point and breaking. So, to put that in another context, one mile stretch of road is about a one-million-dollar project. So 215 million dollars is going to make not even a dent in the city of Southfield, where we have 246 miles of roads to take care of. This money that's being allocated around the state wouldn't even take care of our needs here in the city of Southfield. And as Councilman Cyver pointed out, we're competing with local communities that are facing the same problems that we have. So I'm proud of this council for saying, you know, "Not so fast on this budget surplus. Bring that money back to local communities so that we know where we can make the proper investment." We have the best eyes on the ground to know where those infrastructure investments are needed, and that's the solution to our road problems. It's making strategic, real, long-term investments in our infrastructure so that local communities can make those local decisions to fix the road because we are held harmless, you know? When residents ask us about Southfield Road and Greenfield Road falling apart, it's a bad answer to say, "We can't do anything about it." But we can't do anything about it, and that's the only answer we've got. So echoing the sentiments of my colleagues, this is a priority for us as elected officials. We care about this community deeply, but it's hard to have that passion for the community when the roads that you're driving in the community you live in are falling apart. We're trying to make it better. We're trying to make sure that we have a little bit of influence here on the council and really milking that for what it's worth and advocating for our state and federal officials to make local infrastructure investments. Going on to what Councilman Cyver said, Councilman Fraser and Cyver and I sat down in the Russell Senate Office Building to meet with Senator Levitt and Senator Stabenow during this conference. And I'll speak to say that there are only a handful of elected officials representing only a handful of communities. only a handful of communities around the state in that room. So these conferences that we talk about, that we go to, they're critical. It's important to, not only for us to advocate for our local issues, it's something as simple as the mail delivery, which Senator Levin was the one who brought up and we were able to chime in with our Southfield voice. But it also lets our senators know, Southfield is engaged. Southfield wants two-way communication with our senators, and Southfield is trying to be an influential community. So we're happy to advocate on your behalf. I'll switch gears to announce something that I'm excited about that's coming back to the city of Southfield because I participated in it last year. It's going to be the Second Annual Southfield Restaurant Week. That is scheduled for March thirtieth to April fourth. It is organized by our Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce. Participating restaurants will offer special three-course meals at prices ranging from fifteen dollars to thirty-five dollars during the dinner promotion. It's a chance for our restaurants to show off what they can do. It's also, I'm a lifelong Southfield resident. My parents first moved to Southfield about thirty-five years ago, but it's almost an opportunity for longtime Southfield residents like myself and possibly like the viewers of this meeting to go to restaurants in Southfield that you've never been to before. We didn't know, I didn't know about some of the restaurants just because I've passed them but never actually went in to kind of dine and see what they had to offer. So this year's participating restaurants include Baco, Beans and Cornbread, Be Galora, yeah, there's a flyer that's going around. I know that you can get more information on the chamber's website. The Fire Iron Grill at the Marriott, Hurricane Grill and Wings, The Cola Restaurant and Lounge, Outback Steakhouse, Shield Pizza, which I will definitely be going to on Restaurant Week. Sweet Lorraine, Tango's at the Westin, TGI Fridays, and The Garden at Hilton Garden. So it's, as Mr. Fercassi says, you know, those of us who care about the community here take pride in it. I certainly take pride in the beautiful city of Southfield, and this is an opportunity to support the businesses here, but also be proud that we have these restaurants in our community that want to engage in community activities like Restaurant Week. So you can go to the Southfield Chamber website for more information at southfieldchamber.com.
I just have to discuss the situation of our infrastructure, and everybody laid out the problem with the money being held up. We used to get federal revenue sharing, we used to get state revenue sharing, we used to get all kinds of grants that could assist us in maintaining the city, which they are really responsible to maintain. I mean, we're products of state and they think that they just can keep leading us. The Finance Committee, I hope, will meet right next couple of months and hopefully in August, see when the election, August, November, this year, November this year. We're hoping to get a feeling of whether or not we can go for a road bond millage for, I don't know how much yet or for how long, but if we continue to neglect our roads and because of funding and we get no assistance from anybody else, we're going to have to deal with it ourselves. And the residents, I'm sure, are going to be supportive of this. And they're going to take under our neighborhood group, Mr. Cyver, Mr. Fraser, and see what the feeling is out there. But, you know, somebody just told me the other day that they got in a pothole and they broke their tie rod, their tire, the wheel, and made it an hour bill. That's a lot more expensive than paying the miller to get these roads fixed. So anyways, that's something I'd like to take up in the next month or so. I'd also like to, prayers go out to James Robert McCain. I knew the young man when he was here as a lieutenant of the police department. He was an all-state football player at Southfield High. He was a native of the city of Southfield and an employee of the Southfield City Police Department, and he spent much of his time lovingly coaching Little League, baseball, football, soccer, and hockey as he watched his children go. He became a Southfield police officer and worked his way up to lieutenant. So I pray that we're with his family at this time. He was a great kid. Graduated a year before my wife did at Southfield High School, so it happened to me in a bad time. I haven't seen him since I had him, and I used to know this kid, and he was doing so much in the Parks and Recreation and Southfield High School. Anyways, that's all I have. Anybody else have any comments, name, man?
Got it.
That's the most.
I just wanted to add, I have a good fortune given the state of the city. Today, for Southfield, the air is on cable and also be on the website for those who are interested. But what it does, it gives us a snapshot of the year, and I encourage people to read that and to see some of the accomplishments we've had in the city. I'm proud to say Wednesday, March 12th, our annual citywide blood drive resulted in thirty-seven donors and thirty pints of blood. The next citywide blood drive will be on August the nineteenth. If you've ever been hospitalized or witnessed an emergency or a car accident and people need blood, you know how important that is, and I'm proud to say the city of Southfield has been conducting this blood drive and thank everyone who came to donate. Also, we will be having our annual Battle of the Books. It will be March eighteenth and Wednesday, March nineteenth, in our pavilion. It's an amazing thing, whether you have children in it or not, you want to be energized. Come watch the kids and cheer them on. And then lastly, I do want to say that the pothole situation, everyone has said it correctly and I appreciate it, but we also need to push for new technology. We can't continue to keep using cold patch to fix these roads. We can't continue to use the same mix of asphalt and cement in our roads and expect for them to last for extended periods. It's not working. So as we, everything that's been said, but I also want us to continue to look at and be upfront while we're talking about how the millions and millions of dollars we're spending. It's time for this country to embrace new technology for our roads. It's amazing to me when you travel abroad in countries that have similar situations and they don't have the issues that we have. Also, I'm proud to say that our building, our community economic development division, we have just a vast business community, and we talk all the time about how we can be better. And one of the things we're starting to do is to welcome businesses to Southfield where we will meet with them. And when they come to our city, some of them come in and we don't get to interact with them at all because they're going into an existing site. And we want them to be part of our community. We want them to know about what we have to offer. So we're going to start having Welcome to Southfield Business sessions where they can meet our police chief and our fire chief and meet our park and park people and meet our department heads. So we're excited to start doing that, and I still let you know, Southfield is continuously finding new ways to make our city more vibrant. Thank you.
Administrator?
I just want to comment on infrastructure cold patch. Yes, we're pothole filling. It's been a lot of buzz about it. For example, Saturday, we had three four-man crews out there on a ten-hour shift, and then Sunday, three four-man crews out there on an eight-hour shift. If we're not plowing and salting roads, we have been filling potholes. I'd encourage people to take a look. I mean, every time we've had one of these freeze thaw's, what we're putting in is popping out. And the mayor is absolutely right, we need new technology. I want to thank council for letting us have the authority to buy up to another six hundred tons of cold patch. We typically only go through three hundred ton in a season. And as soon as we, I want to comment, there's going to be an issue with sweeping the streets. There is so much debris because of this cold patch and the rubble, the concrete, that's going to put excess tear on our street sweepers. In certain areas, it may have to be hand shoveled with cold shovels. As soon as we get five days above forty degrees, we're going to have our Dura-Patcher out there. It's not always the prettiest fix, but it is a super glue that holds up a little bit better. I want to thank the folks in Public Works and Streets and Highway Staff and the Water Departments between water main breaks and the streets. Basically, we have a group of men and women who've only had two days off since before Christmas because of their either salting and plowing or pothole filling. We will continue to do that. In the venue of discussion of infrastructure, I stumbled into something interesting this weekend. The city of Grand Rapids, who has a local income tax, we do not have the authority to have a local income tax, is actually proposing a thirty-year increase to their income tax to address streets. I think it's interesting because it points out the public policy failure at both the federal and the state level. At the federal level, we have multiple years of extensions. Instead of the federal government putting in place a permanent piece of legislation, they keep doing these rider bills and extension, knowing that they're grossly underfunding the infrastructure, even though all the research shows it's one of the best job generators for the economy. The other issue for us in Michigan is the formula does not recognize frost laws and the situation. In other words, because of the severe temperatures, the thermal dynamics of our climate, the federal fund doesn't reward the northern states for having to deal with that. The local, at the state level, you may recall Governor Snyder in his two thousand and thirteen wanted to raise a billion dollars for roads, and he used the analogy of putting off house maintenance repairs. Well, we managed to put it off for another years. It should be noted that that billion dollars only fully optimized what this state is able to get from the feds. It didn't put any money in the local level. For four years, I've been attending the Federal Aid Committee at Oakland County Road Commission. Within the entire county, there is only sixteen to seventeen million dollars a year available, sixteen to seventeen million a year available for, they'll fund one complete four-hour job, which is referred to as a complete reconstruction, and then they'll do a resurface job. Wohfully inadequate funding there. You only have to turn to the state of Illinois where there are multiple options where the counties can raise monies to pay for, the counties as well as the locals can raise money to pay for road repairs. The recent legislation, the two hundred and fifteen thousand, I actually have our number, hundred million dollars for winter maintenance, of that seventy-eight percent went to the state and the counties, twenty-two percent to the locals. Not all locals are Act Fifty-One eligible. Townships and some villages cannot get Act Fifty-One funding. Southfield's share is three hundred and twelve thousand. Well, I'm going to tell you, folks, that that doesn't even cover our Southfield for this year. In April, we're going to have to come to the council for a budget amendment to cover our overtime costs for snow removal. I know we're going to have overtime costs for street sweeping as well as the cold patch. This issue deserves, as Council, I mean, Fercassi says, deserves a lot of discussion. I'll leave you with a couple of thoughts. I firmly believe Oakland County will be number one in new road reconstruction in 2014 with Evergreen Road, Eight to Nine Mile being fully reconstructed, Evergreen Road, Ten to Eleven Mile, and Greenfield. And in all of those cases, the advanced planning that this council did, all Evergreen Roads started with planning the council did in February of two thousand and nine. Greenfield is happening because we are willing to put in excess money to match on the county road, which is almost unheard of because of the dire condition. Our resurface job will be Eleven Mile east of Inchester for roughly a half mile in front of the Blue Cross Blue Shield. That will start later this summer. It's still not enough. We need to be focused on the legislative and the public policy piece on this matter. This is beyond, you know, I think there's a couple of opportunities here to encourage our media to move beyond the soundbites of who's got the worst pound fight, potholes, and begin having a very important discussion about infrastructure in this country. And then move beyond just T-shirts and sweatshirts making claims. We all have to be engaged, agreeing to work collectively to solve this problem. That's all I can do. Thank you.
I've got a question for Mr. Fraser. As long as you bring it up. We have talked several times starting in the fall about filling vacant positions in the Water Department and Streets and Highways Department. Are we moving any closer to that? I'm not asking for extra staff. I'm asking to fill vacancies.
That's an excellent question. We have started with the Finance Committee reviewing the Water Department. As we have the cap completed, a recommendation is being made to fill positions in the Water And we've actually posted four positions. Keep in mind, our collective bargaining agreement is very well structured, that when it snows and our water guys, if they're not out on a watering repair, they're actually in the trucks problems. So we've got some flexibility, and we are doing the analysis within our Act Fifty-One. There are a couple items that need to be dealt with from a collective bargaining standpoint to address legislation passed last fall by the state of Michigan, which basically defines how much we can compensate our Act Fifty-One employees. In particular, it redefines their fringe benefits, which will force most communities to have to renegotiate their collective bargaining agreement. So we're moving on the waterfront and we are doing the analysis on the Act Fifty-One. I should comment on our street funding. Our Act Fifty-One, when you take a ten-year snapshot, is down about a half million. We're putting together, when you look at a twenty-year period, it's down about three and a half million dollars. And then we also are fortunate enough to have a local mill, a one-mill. Used to bring in three point six million. It only brings in two point four million now.
Thank you.
We're working on the staffing, which is absolutely critical to resolving, especially as we start the construction of the various projects.
Any council? City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just in the instance of time, we have four litigation matters that have been instituted against the city, and I'm seeking to have council authorize us to defend, take whatever action to represent the city. Those would be in the case of James Baker versus the city of Southfield, Alice Jordan versus the city of Southfield, Katrina Rogers versus the Southfield Public Library, and Edward Baker versus the city of Southfield, Edward Wilcox versus the city of Southfield.
I would move the approval of attorney to defend the city of Southfield in the four cases outlined.
That was approved by Mr. Cyver, supported by Mr. Seymour. All the favors taken by the state.
Aye.
And he's, first and foremost, so, you know, I'm using Mr. Fraser, but this one only had, this one only had.
They found the light.
So I got to give her partial, whatever.
You can do the next one. They're hearing pretty good, but they can hit the both sides. Clerk, any questions?
Yes, thank you. Before you counsel, is it the application for a charitable gaming license from the Institute for Individual and Emotional Therapy? They are located, yes, two nine six zero zero Northwestern Highway, and they are requesting to be recognized as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license from the state of Michigan. They wish to conduct a raffle at their annual fall fundraiser benefit dinner, which will be held October fifteenth at the Birmingham Country Club. I believe that there is a representative from this organization that has sat patiently throughout our meeting that would like to come forward and if Congress has any questions.
Well, the application is filled
Will the applications filled out properly and approved?
Yes, all the applications were provided and submitted in a timely manner.
Will find any other that would speak, if you have any?
No, absolutely not. They did all the firm.
Would you care to make any comments? Sir, give me your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is David Baker. I'm the president of the Institute for Individual and Group Psychotherapy. Postgraduate training program for psychotherapists in our community. I'd be proud to know that Southfield is maybe only one of only two of these training programs that really concentrates on making sure that we have quality mental health counseling services for our community. We've been doing this for about 35 years. And this helps us in our providing scholarships for our students who sacrifice a lot to train as apprentices with us in our programs to work effectively with people's lives.
But David, is your raffle or lottery?
Raffle would be a lot of the, the benefit dinner is October 15th, and the raffle will be an ongoing process up to that.
Okay. Counsel?
I move that we approve this application for charitable gaming license.
It's moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Cyberg. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays. Motion carries.
Mr. President? May I make a suggestion? This is about maybe the third or fourth since I've been on council charitable gaming licenses that we've supported here. It always comes at the longest meetings of the season. For the next time, can we move these up to presentations just so at least the information is on the front end of the meeting? And I'm sure you enjoyed sitting at the council meeting for this long, but maybe next time you want to be at the front end of the meeting, it might be better.
I'm going to go visit and ask this meeting.
Right. Right.
I'm going to make the presentation with the council.
Will handle this, the option standard special assessment, that was for the city center, Mr. Crowell?
Yes, through the chair, as council may recall, we had a study session on this item on March 3rd, 2014. The current city center special assessment ends on June 30th of 2014, and we'd like to renew this for additional three years. The city center advisory board has made a recommendation to the city council. The first steps include establishing the purpose for and the duration of the assessment and the estimated cost to individual property owners and to schedule a public hearing of necessity for May 19, 2014. There's a recommended resolution for the council, and we are recommending that you adopt standard special assessments, Resolution 1 and 2, to start the process.
Counsel members? It's moved.
Moved by Mr. Cyberg, supported by Mr. Fraser. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays. Motion carries, Mr. Fraser.
Mr. President, I move that we enact Order Number 1621, smoking loan license.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Moss. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays. Motion carries. If there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.